So you don't break it.
Me, 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 me.
Usually it's the same for like open things, so I agree to use the city of Raleigh in the right way.
Yeah, you gotta click on the little box.
And that was down there, which...
No, but it's not.
Well, mine comes up and then you gotta click on the little box of agree and then click on the...
Yeah, it's not doing the agree part.
Be on the... Did you bring the right computer?
Trying to be.
Oh, yeah. Oh, look at that one.
Talks to the IT guy today.
He said that the Wednesday after our meeting they worked on the Wi-Fi?
The regular one should work, but it didn't work for me.
Will you try your best with the...
It's hard for me.
The regular one is?
I mean, if you wanna start the meeting.
Yeah.
Like, I can just sit here.
Is it asking for login?
It's just...
It's asking you to change my password.
That's the one you used to...
I think that's what I did.
Oh, wait, where's that little notification?
I think that's where it has me.
Action needed. I guess if you click this little guy down here, this corner, well, now it didn't because it works. This thing, that little chat box. That's how I got the...
I believe so.
I got, that's how I got this thing. It's this little guy right there.
I think it's the one for this.
He won't be there next time. He'll be gone next time.
Just after my meeting. I thought that's what it was.
Josh always tells me, "I already showed you..."
It's the one for the...
Yeah, a year ago. All right, is everybody ready?
No.
Okay, well, wait a moment.
Let me turn my sound off.
Sorry, just turned the sound off.
That's what mine says too, so I used the guest one. But then the guest one says there was no internet.
Make sure the next one's about the Backstreet Boys or you're gonna be trouble.
That happens to be the ringer I have for my mom.
Oh, wait a minute.
Okay, all right.
So you didn't answer your mom's phone call? You didn't answer your mom's phone call? You're gonna be trouble.
Just make sure you remember that password you just used in case it actually changed it. That's weird.
But it said I couldn't get on that network, so I guess it's not that one.
Are we ready now? All right, I'll call the workshop, uh, work session to order at 6:04 and I will turn the floor over to whoever. Brian, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, we were asked, well, I'm gonna speak for all of us, we were asked to come here tonight to kinda give a, an idea of what ordinances and everything that we do in our position every day and then the process and everything like that. So, um, I'm gonna start out, um, I gave a handout to everyone for the same thing that was uploaded on the, uh, boarding docs and, uh, but just in case you wanna follow along as opposed to our computer and everything. So, so my first two sections are nuisance enforcement overview and sample letter and nuisance enforcement selected relevant ordinances. And, uh, prior to getting into anything, I just wanna to say that a lot of, uh, our departments and areas with the ordinances and everything tend to somewhat overlap or cover each other. So I have had an opportunity to work a lot with Lou and also Ariel, um, because a lot of, like I said, areas overlap, especially with Ariel, because when she covers issues with a specific building, there may be issues that involve my area as far as the outside property and property nuisances basically. And vice versa also, when I come across state property, a lot of times it involves a rundown house or structure also. So then I'll include Ariel along with that. So, so moving into the first section for nuisance enforcement, uh, the first section there is just the areas that primarily I am responsible for and deal with. Number one is abandoned, derelict vehicles, junk, refuse, garbage, litter, unsafe appliances, et cetera. Uh, property issues which include, which initially is the same as like dealing with abandoned vehicles or derelict, except some properties, you just have the issue of like a derelict, derelict vehicles or abandoned vehicles or junk. When I refer to property issues, that basically means multiple issues, vehicles, junk, appliances, tires, you know, basically anything and everything, which each thing could be a separate, uh, incident or issue. Um, also weeds and grass, and I guess along with that I should say in the wintertime, snow issues if we have them. And, uh, the ordinances specifically that I'm responsible for are Title V, which is business, taxes, licenses, regulations. But specifically in that section, uh, I was appointed to help with liquor license compliance. Uh, also Title V, health and safety, which includes garbage and refuse, nuisances, dangerous conditions. And Title XII, street sidewalks, public places, which that one actually comes into play the least out of all of them 'cause that's specifically like issues with trees, sidewalks, stuff like that, which I don't come into contact with a whole lot. The biggest issue is Title V, which is plainly titled nuisances, and that covers just about anything and everything that I come into contact with as far as properties. Um, I also, aside from that, I also have different responsibilities that I take seriously with, um, I'm a certified tips trainer to go along with Title V, which means that I assist, um, our patrol area, or right now it's just George Phillips, um, with tips training for liquor licenses and everything. Uh, I also am certified to assist the PD with traffic issues, escorts, um, extra, extra things like that that come up. Um, I've assisted in organizing and putting together the I-80 clean, the two I-80 cleanups that we do each year and also our downtown community cleanups. Uh, educational issues, meaning like on Facebook or advertisements on the radio, stuff that we do to try and get the point across about issues with yards, how to maintain them and, uh, the landfill, everything like that. And then I also assist the chief and his dilapidated and dangerous building committee along with Ariel and Lou. And, um, so that's, that's basically the areas that I'm responsible for. Um, the rest is an outline, um, based on the process that I normally have to follow for nuisance complaints. I narrowed it down to just the nuisance complaints because again, that's about ninety percent of what I come into contact with. And, uh, basically it starts out with, uh, the possible different things that, issues that could come up like abandoned vehicles, junk, unsafe appliances, dangerous conditions, weeds, grass, property cases, and, uh, a whole lot of other things. Uh, it goes into, uh, first, a reported issue or concern is presented to me in several ways. I, in short, emails, uh, talking to people face to face, the concerned issues on our website, you know, a lot of different ways I get complaints or, um, notice or people calling to with concerns. Um, number three, when an issue or concern is brought to my attention, I often have to find additional information such as addresses, property ownership, so I have to do a fair share of research, which in itself takes quite a bit of time because a lot of the properties I actually come into contact with that have issues also are, the ownership is either not updated to where I'm getting ahold of the right owner or I have the right addresses to even get ahold of the owner or the owner a lot of times is deceased and it's still showing that owner in the records. So that in itself brings a big problem for me to initially engage in trying to rectify a situation if the person is deceased because that is the main person that I'm supposed to be dealing with and contacting. I have had some luck with dealing with family members, um, to try and rectify some situations, but that's, that's a big problem that I run into all the time. Uh, number four is investigate to verify if the violation is unfounded or not, or founded or unfounded. A lot of times we get calls or emails about different concerns, I go to check them out and there really is nothing there to deal with or it's just not an issue. It's, the person that reported it may have an issue, but it's not an issue. So I have to determine that. Uh, number five is I, then I gather my notes, picks all my information, um, and then get prepared to issue my notice of violation, which, uh, is eight six, or section eight sixteen forty, if you want a little bit more information on that. And then it, along with the notice of violation, I send a notice of a resolution plan in hopes that they will voluntarily give me information and create a plan to rectify the situation with me. Um, if not, then we just continue to move along and I hopefully make contact with the person and, you know, get action moving on the property. Um, then a timeline and everything is established for them to work with and then I do a lot of follow-up with them. That's the other thing is a lot of, once a issue is opened and I'm dealing with it, a lot of it is continual follow-up. Even if they start to work on the situation and are making progress, it's still continued follow-up because I have to keep monitoring that and if they get to a point where they have almost resolved the situation, but then it creates, something else is created or something else comes along, then that's a whole new, whole new case, a whole new issue that I have to open and I have to start the situ, the process all over again. Uh, s, number six is just, uh, dealing with weed and grass violations is a little bit easier. A lot of times I deal with those with simple door hangers or phone calls to let the person know about the situation with their yard or their property. Um, if I cannot get ahold of them directly that way, then I have to follow the same process with a notice of, one of my letters of a notice of violation and then again, continue to follow up on it and try and get it resolved. Uh, there's a lot of factors that delay things, um, I, the biggest thing is mail. I have to send my letters certified, I think it's certi, is it certified or registered?
It's certified.
Certified, certified letters, meaning that they have to sign for it. The post office will hold those for at least ten days, waiting for the person to come in and get, get them and sign for. So right there, I'm waiting at least possibly ten days. I've had several times where the post office holds and won't return it to me unsigned for several weeks. I just got one back today that was four weeks old and I get it back unsigned, undeliverable. So then I have to start the process over again and figure out a different way to try and make contact with the person to get this notice to them. Um, so that's the biggest thing that, um, tends to delay things. Then there's other things as far as...
I don't mean to butt in, but you, are, are some of these due to, uh, things you've already mentioned? They don't live there, that sort of thing, or, or is it people knowing what's coming and they just don't sign for it?
It's a little bit of both.
Okay.
Um, I'll, sometimes it's an ad, because as you've heard, uh, with Councilman Debary Martinez before, um, a lot of the properties are owned by people out of state, not local. So, a lot of times I end up not having either the correct address or it's sent to a physical address when they actually may have a PO box, or I send it to a PO box and they've either changed the PO box or gotten rid of it, period, you know, there's a lot of different things that, um, can...
I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Why, why they weren't getting them.
Yeah, but there are, there, the one I got back today, almost assuredly was, he probably just didn't wanna sign for it because he probably knew what it was and everything, so. And, uh, then there's other factors, uh, hearing procedures, uh, if I, I've never really had to initiate anything as far as a administrative search warrant, but in the event that I cannot get the information on like vehicles and stuff that I need to do the warnings, I would have to do like a administrative search warrant because I can't just walk onto the property and start writing whatever information down. That's a violation of their, their rights and everything, so. So then I'd have to go through the process of doing the cer, getting a search warrant and then, um, and then there's just the process, the, the fact that they, when I do send a notice and everything out, they have the right to, um, uh, file to challenge that notice, even if it's plain as day that...
And who do they challenge that with?
Uh, they have to file with the city court and then they, they go in front of the judge, I would assume, and try and fight it, you know, fight the validity of that there's a problem there, you know. The next page is just, just an example of, uh, a typical notice that I send out. It follows pretty much the same form each time, especially for property cases, um, but I do sometimes cater it 'cause I have to make the information specific to that property, meaning if there's vehicles, I have to, I have to kind of discuss the vehicles in question, if there's appliances, I have to name appliances, you know, specific stuff like that. And then also, as far as specifics, I have to give them an established timeline of initially what they need to start doing and working on things with. And then if I see things being done or progress being made, then it's at my call if I wanna work with them, which more times than not I do because it, it's just, it's, there's no reason to try and take a hard, hard line stance to it a lot of times when that's not gonna get the reaction that you want. So if I was in the same situation, I would want someone to be telling me what I need to do and when I need to do it, but then also working with me if I'm trying to work with them. So I try to do that as much as humanly possible. Uh, the next page is just, um, two of the, uh, door hangers that I tend, I use for weeds and grass violations or snow violations. Then the next page is just, um, some warning labels that I have for garbage violations and then, uh, the same nuisance violation that I use the warning letter for. These are just basically to kind of add to the fact that if I, if I send out a warning like for a property violation, then sometimes I use this to further reinforce to them, you know, I put it on the door or something like that, just to further reinforce it and make them aware that something's going on. And then going into section two, which is the actual city ordinance, eight sixteen nuisances. Um, I just put this in there, I mean, obviously you can look at it online and everything along with the other titles and everything. Um, the biggest, but nuisances is the biggest common issue and the thing is, is it covers a wide range, not only the things that I've already discussed as far as like abandoned vehicles, derelict vehicles, but it, and it covers things as obnoxious, offensive odors, discharging of offensive matter, water pollution, stagnant water, dense smoke, which in a case like that, a lot of times if I have a call or a concern about something like dense smoke, I'm gonna most likely involve either the fire department or something along with me anyway.
We would rather people with SCBA's go and handle that smoke product and Brian, of course, because of health issues.
Keep a big string tied to him when he goes in.
And Chief Schumacher's team needs opportunities to use their gears.
Exactly, that's right, that's right.
Um, then obviously weeds, maximum height of weeds, and then it gets into abandoned vehicles and derelict vehicles, which there's even additional is, or sections with that based on whether you have racing cars or like with the demolition derby, you have demolition cars and stuff. Um, junk, foul offensive conditions, which if you read it, I mean, it can be a, just a ton of different things. And then of course, the freezers and appliances, which, um, a lot of people just, for whatever reason, when they remove from their house, they just tend to plop them right out in their driveway and there's, you know, certain things that you need to do as far as that also.
You know, were you gonna say something?
I was gonna ask a question.
Go ahead.
Uh, Brad, what, what's been done about the industrial area, um, over...
Well, that's...
West side, no, east side of town?
That's, that's a good question.
Okay. It's just, I, I noticed it, I don't usually go over there, but I noticed that the last time I was there, how bad it's gotten.
Yeah, there's a, well, there's a couple of areas that are far worse than others, um, but there's a bunch of air, or I mean, there's more than just a couple properties that...
Yeah, it's, it's definitely more than one.
It's an entire area.
Yes, yeah.
So it, it's a good question, I've been working with Jared, my chief, um, also asking questions of Lou and everything of that area.
This has been going on for quite a while.
But it's, but it's worse.
It's been over two years, or three years.
Well, the last, even in the last three months, I've noticed that...
Yeah, it's worse.
That one area's got like heavy metal stuff, you know, stuff, stuff that has no axles, wheels, tires and they're right up against the road and...
Well, he's moved stuff around, he's pushed motorhomes around outside, he's fenced next to that granny's ditch, which I think DQ'd have a problem with that.
Yes.
If you got gas and diesel and stuff leaking into that irrigation ditch, I think DQ'd be on that, but out there in front of him, between it and the dirt out there, he's got oil and all kinds of stuff on all the ground out there and everything else, which is, I believe, a city property.
Um, and I know the area that, uh, Council and Mayor's talking about, in, over where, uh, the Downs Truck Shop used to be, there's, um, a property down in that corner. So anything, and, and we could even go on to the, to the county, um, website to see what the right of way is there. And to me, anything that's within that right of way needs to be gone. Um, in our ordinance in Title 19, under salvage and wrecking, um, it has to be behind an oblique fence. And, you know, and that's what we're trying to enforce now, um, is to get that, but I was through that area yesterday and it's, it's worse.
Yeah.
And it seems like it just keeps getting piled up within the right of way.
Well, he just moved two or three things out and about ten back.
Yeah.
Of literal junk.
Well, there's several properties down there that have fenced yards and there's stuffs outside the fence and I, I know some, I'm real well and it's, it's terrible and I, I wish we could do something about that area. It's, uh, dangerous, actually getting dangerous on that one street. Growing shut.
All them down there, if you go down through there, there's a lot of derelict vehicles sitting outside their property park.
I, I agree and this is no surprise to me or anything.
Yeah, I'm sure not.
And it's no surprise that it's being brought up and everything. I'm open to suggestions, ideas, anything, I mean, I've discussed it with Wendy or, or city attorney, um, and one of the issues is as far as the vehicle, I mean, if it comes to abating the situations ourself, then that's a, becomes a problem because those vehicles have to be impounded.
Yeah.
So then I'm gonna be filling up basically our entire impound lot with vehicles based on a couple, you know, like one section of town and everything. Um, I, I mean, there's always citations.
And then they have to have fair sale, they need to get rid of them.
Yeah, and there's always, well, and then I have to do inventory and paperwork with the state and everything for these, for the vehicles that are impounded.
Oh, uh, I brought it up before, is it something that we could go in and give a notice, like give them thirty days to have cleaned up or from that day on, so many dollars fine?
I've actually, uh...
Force them to do it or get fined?
I'm not sure how to kind of word this, but I, with our prior city manager, I discussed in part with him that what would help greatly, aside from just me trying to take enforcement or whatever against this section of town, that it would help greatly if, um, the city council could somehow step up or like you just said, somehow...
I would, I would tell just man.
Assist also with trying to get, with trying to get word out to these businesses that you also want to enforce this and get it cleaned up and that we can prepare, I mean, maybe we can prepare some kind of a letter as a whole, meaning city council, me, wha, you know, whatever other departments, and get it sent out. That way it's the entire city, you know, trying to take a stand against this and not just me. And I voiced, I discussed this before and, uh, it just, it's gone nowhere and everything. So, I mean, I'm, I'm more than willing, I mean, like I said, the only other thing would be citations, but as you know, citations aren't always gonna get the problem resolved. I mean, sometimes that's just gonna cause more problems with not getting any kind of act... I mean, sometimes that's just going to cause more problems with not getting any kind of activity or anything at all. Or, you know, just worsening the attitude and stuff.
There, there's several things, one of, one of which we, at the landfill, we have a, we have a lot of land. And the tow bills would be higher to take them out there, but there's the place to put them. Um, as far as impounding and that sort of thing, I don't mind going through an educational process and letting these people know. And, and I don't, I don't mind your idea of having it be a uh, a main city push to get some of those problems corrected. But in all honesty, when we pass an ordinance, that means that the whole city's behind you. Do you, do you know what I mean?
Right, right.
Like you're, you're, might feel like you're out there alone, but it's because we, the city at some point passed an ordinance. So um, you know, if we can do a major push or, or whatever, I, I'm game because that, that, that just leaves a terrible impression of our town. And if some of the larger investors fly in here and when you fly in and then drive out of there to anyplace else, it doesn't, it doesn't look good. So I'm, what I'm saying is, is I myself anyway, and I think several other people are willing to do whatever we need to do to get it cleaned up, Brian.
Okay, I will definitely work on that.
Anybody disagree with that statement?
I was informed a year and a half ago by the chief police that if it's on city property, not on proper property, that they are enforcing it too. They're, they're, they're supposed to be enforcing it as well as you. Just like me parking a car on the street in front of my house, derelict car. They are the ones enforcing it instead of you, so are they helping you get this voiced and, and I'm just trying to get you help to push it too, you know what I'm saying?
Mr. Mayor, can I just add in a little bit here? It is a complex issue uh, because of the zoning that, that's out there, it's different than parking a car in your yard or in front of your house. And uh, so we've been working on a collaborative effort because it, it, we've got Title eight involved, we've got Title nineteen involved. And so it is requiring co-enforcement to jump out of his lane and, and work with other departments in the city. And, and the other side is um, we've, we've encountered many roadblocks along the way too. Um, a while back, Brian and I discussed this, he sent some, some notices of violation for derelict vehicles. Uh, one of the repair shops moved a, about a dozen, Brian?
Yeah.
Maybe a dozen cars. Um, a collector of derby cars, so to speak, didn't do anything and, and started making some complaints. And then we were doing the direction that we need to back off and um, handle it a different way. And then we got, I know which one, a couple of you are referring to that's closer to the airport, um, he's also, he also has some issues. And again, we're, we're landing in several different sections of the code to deal with this. So it takes a team effort and when we start talking about that team effort and then the notifications in order to make sure we're meeting these people's due process, it takes way longer than any of us would like. And it takes a lot of resources as well. So if we're going to go tow a hundred derelict vehicles from one property in the industrial area, once the search warrant is issued to be able to do that, then we have to have the resources in place to pay the record drivers thousands upon thousands of dollars to get them moved. So again, working and trying to get compliance and get them to move on their own, a dozen vehicles was a nice first step, but it wasn't near enough in one case. But it, it's an ongoing issue that we, we discuss frequently and we continue to work on and stay in contact with those, those property owners to try to resolve. But I, I think we all agree that we need to find a faster way to get it done.
It's called motivation. And, and I think Councilman Seelaw brought up a, a, a good motivator and that is a, a fine for not being in compliance. And um, you know, you can tow all those and have them and all that, but then when you're done, the tow bill's higher than the property's worth, I know how that goes.
And we've ended up in that situation before the city, so it's one of those situations where we have to tread lightly and make sure that ducks are in a row and, and we.
Sure, well, I totally understand. I just, but I don't think you'd have to tow them all.
No.
I think you'd have to tow some.
You might have.
And then the problem might start here in itself.
It'll start here in itself.
It's terrible down there. I mean, we just cannot.
And some of them have been sent here for a long time, some of them along that down and there's been in places for a long time. And yeah, it's, so.
Well, and like Lou said, we have repair shops that in effect have salvage yards that don't have the fencing requirements. They're, they're, they've got vehicles inside the fence, outside the fence, some are on the right of way, some are not. And it's, it's a big undertaking once we dive full in and, and we're formulating the plan to get it done.
I can tell you, I, when the city one time wanted to do the, the opaque fencing and then, you know, I kept telling them and I don't think that's going to work very well because the wind's going to blow a lot of fences over. And so they put in all that, that stuff by the uh, uh, yard, the city impound yard. And. Yeah, and a week.
Slas that go down through the chain link.
And a week later, the course fence is laying on its ground because all the poles weren't tough enough and they weren't frequent enough and such like that. But I remember as a person in the automotive business with a lot full of cars, we had some theft, but because you could drive by and look in there and we had lights in there to where you could pretty much see if somebody was in there doing stuff, uh, we didn't really want to put up an opaque fence because once they're in, then they could take their time stealing that transmission or rear end and had all that stuff done, but uh, over the years. But that, there, there were several reasons we did not want an opaque fence. On the other hand, there were also rules to go by, like your cars had to be in your fence. And I can't remember, a height of weeds and so forth, um, it didn't look like a junkyard. It looked like cars orderly parked back there, if you go by the rules. I mean, it's kind of a tough deal, but the, the, the opaque fence thing makes no drift so that you can walk over them. And I mean, theft just was something else at that time, might not be so bad now, but.
On, on the opaque fence, Luke, and I mean, he's researched it, it's actually, the federal government requires it. Within so many feet of IED or it's, it's roadways, it's got to be opaque. Any junkyards or any salvage vehicles, it's got to be an opaque fence by the federal government, not by the city. We, we recognize that the, the government's actually the ones that it's got.
It's a thousand feet, I think, from the federal highways.
Thousand foot.
Correct.
And then if we like at the truck repair shop by the corral, that's right up against the right of way. And they have the fence, but you can see from the interstate right down into the yard.
Well, the one part over there don't even have a fence, they're just out on the other side of the fence out there, but.
The property between here and St. Clair, we worked very, very hard to clean that up and it was, it really looked good.
Yeah.
Oh my gosh.
Yeah, don't drive out there now.
It's worse now than it was. And we spent, the county spent probably a quarter of a million dollars cleaning that property up. And then now it looks a lot like it did. There was a lot of those trailer houses and that got into the asbestos and all the things you're talking about. You know, the problems with cleaning it up, but at the time it was worth doing and it looked great. And then of course, it's backslid, but different, different deal. But these, these junkyards, these unauthorized junkyards, if you will, that we have in our town are uh, boy, especially in the industrial addition, I realize it's industrial addition, but if they just put their stuff in the fence, it wouldn't be so bad, but.
And in our, in our Title nineteen under the industrial area, anybody that does have a junkyard, salvage yard, they have to apply for a special use permit.
And doesn't the state have a requirement of if you have X number of cars, you have to have a state junkyard license?
Um, they, they give you, and I talked to the state about this, uh, because I wanted to tackle it a different way and take a different approach to it. When I, when I talked to the lady down there, she says, well, whatever your ordinance is, I really don't care as long as I get a letter saying that yes, they are in compliance and in the industrial area. And really, I think the only one out there that has the oblique fence would be uh, Ray Brown's.
But you can look right in his yard too, so.
Yeah, and, and it's, you know, we go with the oblique fence, it's, it's just like a big kite, especially around here, you know. I just, there, there has to be another solution to um, getting it out of sight, out of mind. It's just that, you know, looking at the code, see what the code has and, and find out what would work. It's just trying to find that.
I'd be totally satisfied if they were just off of the city right of way and behind the fence. I think that would be an incredible first step, I really do, and I think it would improve the property. I mean, when you drive by a, a repair shop that has a bunch of vehicles out back that they're partying out, you kind of expect to see that. But what you don't expect to see is all this stuff out in the road, you know, on, on, in the bar pit and all, outside the fences. If they're behind the fences, that's, to me, that's a barrier. But when it starts bleeding over into public, it's actually public property, what I think. They're, they're in the bar pit and in the, there's a reason those places are supposed to be vacant, it's a safety issue.
And I, I did talk to one of our, one of our board members, um, and he had surveyed that industrial area. And, and just talking to him, everything that's within the right of way, i- it's within the right of way. There's nothing that, that's in, on their property, everything's outside their property.
The fences are in the proper place is what you're saying?
Yep.
Well, it's, it's, I'm telling you, I'm with Jackie, the last, I drove down there last, oh, a couple of months ago and then again, just recently and gosh, I can't believe what they're doing out in the bar, right, right there, I mean.
Well, Mr. Mayor, without getting into too many specifics and naming people in this forum, one of the properties you mentioned is, is the letter that Brian just received back undeliverable. So he's on our list and hand deliver to as soon as we find him. Um, and, and then uh, you know, it, we just have to formulate a plan and, and I think after hearing the discussion tonight, we understand where the priority is. So we'll make sure we get some heads together and formulate a plan to start working on that.
Don't want one guy saying that you're picking on me and not picking on everyone else, that's the other problem.
That's part of the issue.
Everyone's got to be picked on the same. Yeah.
Yeah, as soon as one letter is given and then Brian spends a day with a property owner riding around, looking at eighteen other properties that are also not in compliance and, and.
It's very helpful, but who needs it, right?
Yeah, and then he's got enough work to do for eighteen months and, and can't get anything else done.
But it is.
It's a tough balancing.
There, there are two things that it, it, most of the time that I get chewed on or whatever, often like ninety, it's a ninety some percenter is, is either the not enforcing the ordinances or unfairly enforcing them. And it's hard.
And if we're doing one, then you hear about the other.
It's hard to write everybody in town a ticket at the same time, but um, but it should be a goal to get everybody in compliance at the same time. But just to let that go down there is just absolutely not the answer.
And, and that's not happening, like I said, that with one of the letters that he just got back is in reference to one of those properties.
Yeah, and there's three or four down there.
Yeah, there's.
There's quite a few, there's quite a few down there, yeah.
It is on our radar as well and we'll make sure we, we put a team together to make sure we go after it effectively, fairly and evenly as we move forward, working on that area of town.
Like I say, we do have a major irrigation ditch down through the center of that down there that, I don't know, how do you keep looking down at a bunch of that, you know, all the way down through several of them places, the cars that run them, I don't know. I don't, I don't know if they got some restriction on that or not, so, but.
And, and part of what the team needs, once we get everybody together, we need to tackle. If, we have some enforcement ability in ordinance, but we don't have the capability with staffing. Because Lou works with Title nineteen, Ryan works with Title eight, and you know, police department works with titles five, six, eight, nine, and ten. Um, so there's some things in ordinance that are outside of people's specific enforcement areas. So it may take a directive from the city manager as to who is going to be responsible for these overlapping, these gray areas and not necessarily overlapping enforcement, but gray areas for that enforcement effort. That's part of the problem that we've run into in handling these situations as well. So we can work on that as a team and figure out who the city manager needs to authorize for some of these specific areas in enforcement.
Lou said he'd do it.
Lou said he'd defer it.
We, we all voted.
Just so you all know, that's why he's my favorite. Well, and I understand, you know, the not my job thing or that's not really, I'm not really covered for that or, you know, this, that, and the other, but whatever it takes to get that figured out is what we need to do. And I appreciate you recognizing that and um, we just, that's what we need to do, you know. Whatever we need to do to get it fixed.
Well, I commit to you that I will continue to work on it along with your, everybody else. And if it's the last thing I do before they put me six feet under, we'll get it taken care of.
Now, that's a commitment.
I'm not going to bore you with the rest, I want Lou to have his time to talk and Brian also. So the, the last parts of the title is just, goes about the hearing procedures, the procedures for assessing costs, um, which include liens or anything like that. But we can't even do that yet because we don't have the MOU for, from the county to do liens. So that kind of somewhat ties my hands as far as abatements also, because that means we have, if I'm going to abate a place, either I have to do it myself or I'm going to have to like contract out to somebody to do it so we can charge a different way. But Wendy, hopefully we'll have that rectified before too long, so then we can move along with some, some issues and get some properties abated. And um, then also just a simple procedure on, again, if I'm had to remove vehicles from a property, what I have to follow, so.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Just one comment and that is, uh, and Wendy and I have talked about this and I think this is going to be a process that just goes on for a long time and that is try to streamline our ordinances to where we can take care of these things faster, stay within the uh, law, because they're, you know, state law over, you know, depicts how we do a lot of those things. But uh, if we can shorten up our, our time spans to where we can do these in a shorter amount of time, those kind of things is what we need to pack away at.
And me and her have discussed, when I meet with her on different instances, we have discussed that also. And she does actually assist me in some properties if there, if there are certain shortcuts or whatnot that we can take or something, um, she assists me with that so that I'm still staying within the parameters, but.
We don't take shortcuts, we, we just find quicker ways to get.
Yeah.
And still, it's a good process.
Maybe that was wrong term, but uh, and everything. Um, but that's something that I've discussed with her also. Um, her main thing is usually comes back to um, the process is the process and it's, the process is there because it's right now, the process that protects everyone's rights along with what I need to do, it's just that they kind of, you know, like that. But um, but I have discussed stuff like that with her too, so.
Yeah, that's all of our jobs to stay on top of that, so that stuff just needs to be brought to us for attention and we can go from there.
Yep.
All right, thank you, Brian.
Thanks. You're welcome.
My turn, okay, thank you. Thank you for allowing my turn.
Your turn.
To talk about Ariel's job, so bear with me, okay? So since she cannot be here tonight, uh, basically Ariel works under of Title fifteen. And since we've been working together a little bit more often, I have learned more stuff about building code than I have in my entire career. So it's been a very, very strong learning curve, kind of glad that I got to do that because it's, it's a side that we never really, don't get a chance to look at, so. Um, as you can see right underneath the first one, the building official has the authority to suspend or revoke permits under this tile. to suspend or revoke permits under this tile. If it's found that a permit is issued on error, or on basis of incorrect information supplied, or violation of any ordinance or regulation, we're envisioning this tile. She has done this a number of different times, given a work stop, uh, obviously, so that situation can be rectified. One of the biggest things that we did was we accepted the two thousand twenty-one international building codes. That pretty much allowed us to obviously get the latest and greatest, as far as everything that's going on, international-wise, and as you see going down there, it just talks about everything from health and safety to egress facilities, uh, you name it, things that she needs to be very, very up on when she does her inspections, and like I said, since we have the twenty-one codes, we are...
When were those adopted?
We did those last year.
Last year.
Yes, sir. Yeah, 'cause it did, it took, I'd say it took, what, eight, nine months, Lou, or so? Almost a year to get them adopted?
Right.
So, yeah, like I said, they are the most current ones, so, which we're very, very fortunate, a lot of people are still working out the two thousand eighteen, I believe, not this group.
Arizona's twenty-twelve.
Well, yeah, I, yeah, I can believe it.
And the house is five thousand dollars cheaper, but...
Well, there you go, that'll work. I don't wanna read this word for word for you all, okay? I just kinda wanna just go through with little things like, obviously, she ensures compliance permits and inspections when they're required, they turn the page. She does a very, very fine job about finding the people that don't have the permits. A little blood on them, every once in a while, she'd be like, "Did you see that place over there? I don't think they had a permit." Sure enough, she's going on this, and they don't, send them right in the office, and let's get it done, so. That was one of the things that we talked about on the last meeting, about looking, checking out places that, you know, "Oh, they're building a fence, and I don't see anything out there."
A lot of weekend stuff.
We have, we have been able to catch a number of them doing that, so that's, it's kind of our job as a collective group to make sure that people are doing what they're supposed to do, right? Um, is it number four years? I don't know, I just wanna make sure that yours is being outlined and said, and mine is. Basically, it's to enforce compliance with contractors for licensing, insurance, and certification. Obviously, it says on the first part there, it's unlawful for any person, firm, or corporation to carry on or engage or offer to engage in business of contracting for any of the following types of work or services within the city without first having a valid contractor's license. And that was another thing that we did when we first got here, was talk about who could get a contractor's license, what type of license they can get, you know what I'm saying? Can they be at this level, this level, who they have to be under in order to be certified? So, I mean, that was one of the first things when I got here that we kind of looked at, because there was a lot of different questions, people just thinking they can walk in and ask for any type of license they wanted, and it was fine. We realized that that was not the case, so...
Hire one of them.
What's that?
All you have to do is hire one of them.
Yeah, right, right. Um, and enforcing that compliance too for contractors licensing, obviously, as you go down, there's a lot of state statutes and that stuff, and talk about it, the subject, the fines that can be given per violation per day. If you go to next, there's like a first and second notice. So, normally violating any provisions is article on first notice, so one letter, correction to be made within five days, the second's a notice, one letter requesting compliance from the first letter, and once again, I almost feel, it's almost like Brian, is like, you almost feel like you have to, you know, continue on with the same process over and over again to get somebody to actually do what they're supposed to be doing. Obviously, if there's a violation that's of threat to safety and health, immediate correction and a work stop, which will take place immediately, and that's one of the things that I do as an area with as a city safety officer, if I do see something like that out, which I haven't too often, but yes, I will stop and say something. If there is something that's immediate, dangerous to life and health, yeah, that's, you know, that's why we work together on that stuff. It talks about top probation of the contractors, that the building official has the discretion to place a contractor on probation for a period of time not to exceed one year. Obviously, I don't know, has that ever happened, Lou? I'll be honest with you, I'm, I'm not too...
Yeah, we, we did it once, a couple of years ago, put a contractor on probation for, for workmanship.
Was it the roofing company?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, like I said, I do apologize, I didn't know, but I'm sure if it's in there, it's had to happen at least once, so, yeah. Okay, going down, one of the biggest things that, uh, I think we've come a long ways, and I know we have a, a number meeting this month, is the dangerous buildings. Uh, it was, putting together our, our collective group that is working on that right now, and I know that we've ended up getting some decent amount of money from some grants and that stuff to start looking at, not possible abatements of certain facilities, whichever ones we decide, you know, keep thinking that the Pink Motley seems to be the one that everybody pushes first, so, yeah, but, uh, it's one of the things that, like I said, we, I think we really pushed forward pretty nicely with this one, because it really was kind of a dead issue, and, like I said, I think we're getting some traction and...
The China House is gone.
Hmm, yes, yeah, it is, yeah, that's good. Couple of different ways we identify dangerous buildings, uh, obviously, if we check them out or if they're getting called in, uh, the building inspector tries to contact the owners of the property, and just, I mean, this is where we talk about the overlapping situation with, you know, Ariel and Brian's job, you know, it's kind of like, you just feel like sometimes you just run into a brick, you know, a brick wall, and you can't figure this out, can't get somebody to, you know, call you back, and, well, sadly, it kind of just puts a complete halt on the process. Going down, obviously, there has been some administrative search warrants, it was very exciting, I got to do one for the first time, it's kind of exciting, okay? But, and the building inspector does monthly inspections on the properties, so, the city turns notified by building inspectors of dangerous buildings, uh, basically provide all the stuff, the notice of assessment, and I do, Mayor, you still with us on that? Or are you still with us on the dangerous building one?
Yes, and I was gonna add to that, just so you know, we did, as a council, pass another resolution that was forwarded to WHAM, which we're going to this week, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. That is a resolution that will be going through. Chris was on the resolution committee, didn't think he could make it, so he passed that to me. I will be pushing that really hard to get through there, and then it goes through the Board of Directors, which I am on the Board of Directors for WHAM also, and I will try to carry that forward again, and then I'm also on the Legislative Leadership Committee for that, and so hopefully, we can shove that to the front again. We had a, a, a bill that passed through committee a hundred percent, it was, was very, it wasn't the perfect bill, but it was a start, and then it stayed in the drawer and didn't get introduced into the committee. It was brought forward by a legislator out of Laramie, who happened to be a Democrat. There was no Republicans sign on to that. I, I hate that aspect of things, but that's what I think happened over there. So, the main push will be to, you know, to, uh, try to recruit, is the word I'm looking for, some help to sign on to that, and the more the better, to get it.
Move to the front together.
Yeah, 'cause it, it wasn't a bad one. It wasn't a bad bill, it wasn't a cure-all, but it, it would have answered some of our problems.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you all know that we did, once we came up with, you know, our collective group, that's up for dangerous buildings, we did, we went through and basically just started charting exactly what makes it a dangerous building, how do we rank them, how, you know, how does this one set be, and I, and I think that really helped us kind of get, like I said, that initial groundwork to the process, so we can say, hey, yeah, this one seems to be the one that everybody points at, and is that the one we wanna look at first? So, it gave us a building to prioritize them.
Who handles mold? Does anybody handle mold?
That is not done by dangerous buildings, that, basically, you have to have an independent contractor for, I understand, to do that too, to go in and look at your place for that. So, you know, this got into kind of a little, uh, you know, can the hospital say anything about it? Do they have that ability to...
The only one I know is the county health officer. The only person I know that can shut down anything is the county health officer, but I didn't know if there was a building side of it.
Not from mold, nothing I am aware of at all. Am I correct in that one?
The best we could do is call it a nuisance, and call in the health department to check it, but we don't have the ability to actually...
Right, that's, okay. There you go.
Okay.
I almost knew what I was talking about there. It was close, it was close. Okay, keep going down. Does anybody have any questions? I, like I said, I don't wanna sit there and just read this whole thing to you about dangerous buildings and/or what Ariel does on a day-to-day basis as far as building code and compliance. I mean, I know the dangerous building is a massive task, that's another take in that, my goodness, I think we all see it, but it's, a lot of it just has to do with where's our funding coming if we do get the ability to, to abate, right?
I just have a compliment. She, I had a call, oh, it's probably been six months ago, about some cats in a building, and she handled it very wonderfully.
Yes.
But the, the lady was very insistent to get the cats out.
Yes.
These cats were happy where they were, but she was worried about them over the long weekend.
There, there was, there's been a lot of, no one did that same place to...
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that's, yeah, we do, you know, we can get one, and she can take it, that's fine, if not, well, you know...
Rescue that little feral thing.
They say about trying to hurt cats, or...
Yeah, she really helped me through the, I, I got a, you know, license from the city, and she helped me through that process and was really great to work with, and I've had a lot of friends that have done stuff that, some of them aren't all that easy to work with, and I have nothing but compliments on her, really.
That's good.
I think she's very, very helpful.
She, yeah, she's a good, she definitely is, like, yeah. So, if there's not any questions, I'm just gonna move to my part.
Okay.
Okay. What?
Jared, you got this, or you want me to go?
I don't know what's next on the agenda.
I'll, I'll start with mine on...
You got twenty minutes. 'Cause we're gonna have to have a break.
You wanna take a break?
No.
Okay.
Twenty minutes, we have. Keep rolling.
Title nineteen, as we all know, it's finally done and went to the attorney. I think the joint meeting that we had with the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of Adjustments went really well. There were some changes that we had to do, them changes were made and, and sent to the attorney for review, and we're hoping we have that up, the first, second meeting in, um, July, right? Is that what we have?
I think it's the first meeting in July, I think.
So, that's, that I think's moving along pretty good, that we're, we're really pushing to get this done, 'cause, um, we have a short construction season, and we wanna make sure that we can get the, the bones of the garages in the ground before they, they really get too cold here with Title nineteen. Like I said, it's gone to the attorney, I don't really wanna touch too much on that unless Councilman Mayor would like to hear more on the changes that we've done.
I don't, I don't think now's when, but I do appreciate all your hard work on that, it's been a real hard deal, and I, I'm anxious to get it done, obviously, it's just one of those things in front of us, but I do appreciate the hard work you all have done.
Yeah, the office has been really helpful, Wendy, I know she probably gets tired of getting my emails, but, you know, we, we try to work together. So, Title nineteen is coming, we'll have it done, and get it to council for their approval. Um, the other, the other section that I was, I'm assigned to is Title eighteen, which is subdivisions. On the subdivisions, there's a process that we follow, we do a preliminary plat, which has streets, water lines, um, basically utilities, easements, and once, once that's approved by the planning commission, then we have the, the final plat that will come. There are several letters that go out to post office, emergency services, um, there's a list of, I believe, thirteen that we send them to, post office, public works, schools, city engineers, city attorney, police department, fire department. So, we, we have, this one here is pretty touchy with the state statutes that we have to follow to make sure that we're in compliance with, with everything. Like I said, it's, it's one of them, we don't wanna miss a step and have to go back, so we wanna make sure that everything is in order as we're moving forward, and at the end of our preliminary plat, then we have the finished product that we present to council, and once it's approved, then the mayor will sign off on it, and then we go register that with the county. We did have an instance where we did a annexation, went through the process, went through the boards, went through council, it was signed, and was never filed, so working with the county, we got that, um, to go through, so now that, that section over on Harshman that we were dealing with, with the micro living, that's now part of the city, so that, that's been a huge step for, for our office to get that done. Just, just the time it would have taken to, to move forward from that point at the beginning, we were probably looking two, maybe three months to get that pushed through. There's just, like I say, we deal a lot with the, the state statutes on this stuff, so we have to make sure that we're on top of our game, so we don't have no, no hiccups at the end. Like I said, Title nineteen, it's, it's, I think it's gonna be a good document that we have. We made some changes for garages to where it used to be, um, with the garages now, as long as we can meet our setbacks, we can have a garage on the vacant lot, which I think everybody was for on that. I'd much rather have, um, stuff inside rather than sitting outside, so I think council will be happy once that's done, and I'll be very happy once that's done and in the books. Do you have any questions for me? Mine's pretty easy, I, Title nineteen is, that's a big thing, so...
That'll be a Christmas present for all of us.
Yeah.
That's been a nightmare, but, like I said, I appreciate your work on that, and I know a lot of people, several boards worked on that, Wendy, and, um, it's, it's taken a long time, but, um, just so it's right.
Right, there again, it's, it's been a big team effort with everybody involved with it.
Cool. Anything else?
No, in the binder, I just wanna touch, in the binder, we did put a, a small version of our zoning map in the back. This is what, this is what we determine on, on our zones. If, it seems like it's, if you look at it in, in Title nineteen, seems pretty easy, but if you look in, in the, in the book on the hatched areas, that's historical area, so the number twenty-five foot width lots by a hundred and twenty-five foot deep, so if you wanted to get a house or a mobile home in that area, you know, you can do it, it'd be very tight, setback-wise. There's ten to eleven different zones that we deal with on a daily basis, um, so when they come in with the permit, if it's new construction, we'll just use that, for example, we'll make sure that it's zoned properly and make sure setbacks are met with the site plan. Once that's done, it goes for review, once that review's completed, then we can issue a permit, so they can start their construction. It's, it's, it's really touchy on, you know, whether you have a residential mobile home or residential townhome, the R seven-five, um, the Glen Edition is, is a big one, so we, we on our end have to make sure that we're looking at the right section that they wanna build, just to make sure that we have everything that we need in order to build a house or a garage, whatever they, whatever the case may be.
Yes.
I have a quick question on noise. Who handles, um...
Who handles, like a dog barking all night, who handles that?
The police department.
Police department.
Animal control primary, but if it's outside of their normal working hours, then if you call the three-two-eight-four-five-three-zero, then an officer will be dispatched.
Is there a time?
No.
No. So it's up to interpretation?
Our, our city ordinance is determined by what the court ruled as a reasonable person standard. So if a reasonable person would find the noise loud, offensive, intrusive, something like that, then, then we can take enforcement action on it. There's no time requirement involved at all with our noise ordinance. It, it leaves it kinda wide open, but in some cases, it's easy to enforce, in some cases, it's a little more difficult. Just depends on what the noise is. Most people find the barking dog at six AM to be unreasonable, so.
Yes. Well, a friend called about the dog, and then by the time the police got there, the dog stopped barking. So that was also frustrating as well.
The dog knew.
If it's an ongoing issue, have that person contact animal control, they work eight-thirty to five-thirty, usually every day unless one of them's on vacation. And so they can kinda work out some details on what action to take and what things we can do to document that it's going on. And it may be a situation that they're already aware of.
It is hard to get a dog to stop barking.
And then tell that animal control truck, drive down the road.
Yep.
And they know that truck, apparently.
Thank you.
Exactly.
All right, is there anything else? All right, well, thank you guys for the information, appreciate it, and look forward to, maybe coming up to the plan to, to brew some of these things up. Not blaming anybody, I'm just saying, if we work together, we can get this done a little quicker, so.
We got weed season coming.
Thanks.
Are we free for a break? Mr. Whitehead, Mary?
Yes.
I was trying to divide mayor and Mayor Terry, who's coming out marrying.
Mary.
It's your disposition.
Yes, thank you, sir.
It's like it's town terrier, the problem is now the weed season starts.
I know, if they handed me a pen. Yeah.
He comes walking up when I went in.
I wish I had a notebook. Usually it's a shoe flying past my face and it's my dick.
Oh, look at you guys.
But he didn't tell me. But I got the message. But you win.
Over the tops, he's here. How are you? No, work session. Unless you were here to learn about codes. They're probably the same in New York on this chairs.
Blue.
Blue.
What color's your hair?
blonds, yeah.
What color's Papa's hair?
Brown.
What color's Gigi's hair?
Gray. Gray.
Good job.
What color is Aunt Shell's hair? Brown. What color is Aunt Shell's fingernails?
What color are your fingernails? Did you say green?
Yeah, so, hi.
She's a cutie. She gets to go to lots of meetings, I see her all the time.
Y'all probably, I guess I was aware, because it's not physical therapy, but is Mr. Whitehead, have you heard?
He, he told me he's coming for the meeting.
Yeah, I know that he sometimes works and can't make the work session.
Yeah, I know he's working. That's why we made the last one, it's second for me, I knew he was working this weekend.
Terry introduced me to the new guy, you know, I was meeting him.
Are you sure it's not just from the, when the torch came?
It was Steve, no, it was Steve Singer. And I was like, here's Terry, our, one of the standing elder women, and I was like.
And I think that's a proclamation.
Thank you today.
Good, how are you?
That's great, thank you. Like it didn't even hit me, and I was like, wait a minute, that can't be true. What's his impression? I didn't talk to him much about it, just. And I was like, you're talking my ear off. Maybe it's just who he's talking to. I was like, it's cause I'm so lovely. You're the fuckest person, I understand. I'm delightful. Delightful. You were young, of course you're delightful. Yeah, so that was funny. Let's see if I can do it again, but I talked to Chris, he's got. Well, that's cause he wants, but we have to start.
We're sorry.
It's a good conversation, hopefully that still is. Cause you know how to change in between. Who knows? What they tell you is not always what they say. And I hide in my office, nobody's seeing me, I think I did this. I never come out of my office.
I keep looking, so.
She's actually.
Four times, but less than so. That's good enough.
The main thing, he says, is the truck. The system.
It's not like we really have.
Linda, we ready? Can we log in? Was that coffee, and you didn't like the flavor of it?
You guys should be good to jump in.
When you're standing there facing west, like in front of the door.
I've never been in one in my life, but my neck, every time I go like this, it cracks.
Could you speak there?
I noticed that, I like the color.
You'd like mine?
Yes, yes.
You'll have to remind me, Steve, about that other screen piece here. Okay.
I've had it on my ear.
We'll do it that way. Yeah. That's why I'm saying I'll have to.
I mean, also, you log in. But we're not gonna.
Am I right?
Is it bad at you? Hope it does that little pop-up thing. Oh, it's got three comments down.
She checks blood pressure.
Nodding there.
We'll try, we're gonna, this is the password you did just today, have you done that one? I mean, you've done it like twice.
Okay, twelve times.
I just hope it magically works this time, I don't know what's wrong with it.
I did it last night.
Oh, and this is connected, oh, did this get happened? Oh, maybe this one's happening. Do you use this? Evidently, you tried to log into a different one, made it happen.
Thanks.
Yeah, of course, I don't know why it's that much.
It says I am.
Um, yes, I see it's on call to order right now. I can get on board talks, I can't get into the, my laptop or onto my email. Yeah, I'm, I have my personal laptop for board talks. Yeah, I'm, I have my personal laptop from Board Docs.
So is everybody ready to go?
All right, thank you. Uh, it is, uh, seven thirty. Barely. Uh, and I will call this meeting to order. Uh, would you please join for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Uh, next thing on our agenda is roll call, please.
Mayor Terry Wykel.
Here.
Vice Mayor Steve Sanger.
Here.
Councilmember Darryl Gardner.
Here.
Councilmember Tanya Lumen.
Here.
Councilmember Bruce Seelaw.
Here.
Councilmember Jacqueline Wells.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Weisenberg.
Chris, let me know that he got called back to work. He won't be here. All right, thank you. Next thing on our agenda is to approve the agenda. Vice Mayor Sanger.
I move to approve the June fifth, twenty twenty-three City Council Agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been a motion made and seconded to approve the June fifth, twenty twenty-three City Council Agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
Let me refresh. But yes.
Online voting has closed. The motion passes with six yeas.
All right, thank you. Uh, next thing, are you ready, Jackie?
I'll get there. Thank you.
Okay. Next thing on our agenda is, uh, to approve the minutes of May tenth. Do I hear a motion?
It's all.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. The consent agenda. Uh, I'm still not used to it. I apologize. Uh, Vice Mayor Sanger.
I move to approve the consent agenda for June fifth, twenty twenty-three as presented.
Second.
It's been a motion made and seconded to approve the consent agenda for June fifth, twenty twenty-three as presented. Is there any discussion? Councilman Garner.
I just have one question. Uh, I, for the May sixteenth meeting, I was here. I caught the end of the meeting. Um, can I? Because I missed part of it, can I still approve this?
It needs to be moved.
Okay.
Moved out so that it can be voted on separately.
Okay, because I did make a motion. I did put in there where he attended, when he.
Yeah.
He wasn't here for the whole thing, so he has to abstain from the majority of vote to. It'll just have to be a term agenda item.
Okay.
Thank you.
That will, do you, just whenever you're ready, let us know.
Point of order, do we need a friendly?
Yeah.
Amendment.
We will.
Okay.
We'll wait till she's done and then we'll finally up.
Okay, so you'll need your refresh in Board Docs. And you should be down under new business?
It did not like that.
No. I just lost the internet.
Okay. Well, let's try this again. That's why I said it didn't like that.
I was seeing it all together.
So I believe it kicked us all out of here. Are you still on?
I'm good.
I'm good.
I am not.
I'm waiting on my.
Didn't want to refresh.
You might have to close that.
Just in the way.
Myra, this is doing the same thing to me.
Oh, here we go.
Yeah, now just hit refresh and see if it gives you that prompt.
I did it.
And it not flows.
What? Is it not connected?
Close these.
Uh, yeah.
Why would it kick you off the internet?
I was going to refresh.
I mean, to my limited knowledge, I agree.
Who knows?
To my limited knowledge, I agree. I don't know why things happen with the internet.
Okay. It says it is now. Where am I?
Oh.
It says.
Oh, no, it's. I'm gonna try that again.
There it goes.
Are you thinking?
So which?
Lynn, it has it under new businesses that were.
It needs to.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Maybe we could forget this one. And just connect to this one.
No.
Maybe that would help.
I have to bounce back. Would you bring the right there? Internet. Yes, internet. I'm pretty soon I'll lose it. Then I'd go the other one. Then it's.
So good.
We don't have anything again. I mean, if you want to.
I don't have a.
Myra, on, on his.
Uh huh.
We connected to the guest and then we closed Internet Explorer all the way and just reopened it. And then he had to refresh twice in it.
Refreshed.
Yeah, I don't know. Twice is just how many times then it worked.
Were you on Edge or Chrome?
Yeah, Edge.
Would it be different?
Just as long as your guest network is connected.
It says connected, but no internet.
Yeah, and that's what his said. And then once he closed everything and reopened it, he did that refresh on once or twice and it finally popped up.
Yeah, it's like it's not getting the permission to, um, to like ask, will you?
Yeah, that's. May I try Chrome then?
Neither one are giving.
Oh, not neither? No.
Oh. It just keeps asking for the official connection and not connecting.
Yeah, that's what ours did. So.
So I, I haven't told it to forget that. So it would just use the guest one?
And it keeps switching.
I guess.
So where's the, uh?
I've. So it says no internet.
So we're just gonna disconnect.
And then push connect. Just connect automatically?
It.
Because I did, I did put connect automatically.
Oh.
The right, um.
This one. Let's try it the edge real quick.
One time it popped up here and it said, it gave like that comment that said like, we need your. Please opt, please authenticate.
Yeah, that's what ours said. Then it finally went. Sorry.
That'll have real ID. He can run command ops.
I can.
I can kickstart it.
Save that one. Okay, this is the one you usually use?
Yeah. Why is it still? It's this one, I mean, that's not anything.
It's just.
Internet, is it?
There it goes.
How did? Why now does it work?
Because there's something.
Okay. Thank you, Darryl.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys.
Ready?
I close mine.
Okay. You ready?
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda June fifth, twenty twenty-three as amended.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to approve the consent agenda, uh, for June fifth as amended. Is there any further discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
Oh, man, I'm not logged in. Yes.
Yes. Oh, there it is.
Online voting has closed. The motion passes with six yeas.
All right, thank you. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is citizens' participation. This is a time set aside by Resolution Number Two C dash ninety-six. Uh, sets a time limit of five minutes for any citizen that would like to come up and address the, um, City Council on, on something that is not on the agenda. So at this time, is there anybody that would like to come up and speak? Come on up. You have to say your name and sign in and, uh, so we know who you are, Mike.
Um, my name is Mike O'Brien. I'm, uh, the utility supervisor. Um, I'm actually here just to, um, talk about the crew, the utilities crew. We had nine breaks in twelve days and the hours that they put in on the weekend at night through the day, you know? They spent more time at work than they did with their own family. So I just wanted to recognize, um, Jimmy, Robert, Todd, Josh, Patrick and Braxton. Um, Cody, he was out there helping. He, he got his boots muddy, so he was out there in the hole. Um, they're exhausted, so, um, just wanted to let them know that they did a hell of a job. Hopefully, uh, we don't have anymore, but that was a long two weeks. Just wanted to let them know that.
No, it's public comment, but can I say thank you and clap?
Yes. We have a heck of a crew. Is there anybody else that would like to get up and speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the next thing on our agenda, which is a presentation of the Community Builder Award for June twenty twenty-three. And so I will turn the floor over to, uh, that committee and, uh.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, um, all members of the volunteer committee join us. Great. Um, this is exciting. Um, quick history about this award and then I think Myra's gonna, uh, say some more things. So the Community Builder Award is a monthly award the city presents to local businesses, individuals and organizations for their volunteer service, sponsorship, promotion of programs and events, outstanding service in the interest of the city and for other contributions, contributions significant to Rollins City of, uh, sorry, Rollins Quality of Life. So the volunteer committee for June twenty twenty-three would like to, uh, award this gentleman standing or sitting behind us, Larry Moore, uh, for all his contributions to this wonderful community. And I think Myra's going to say a few more things.
Honorable Mayor and Council, we are honored and I am especially personally honored this evening to present the June Building, Community Builder Award to Larry Moore. Mr. Moore is synonymous with the arts in our community. From his thirty-eight years at Rollins High School teaching English, drama and speech to community arts, Mr. Moore has impacted thousands of lives. Mr. Moved, Moore moved here when he was twelve years old and is considered Rollins' home for the sixty-plus years since then. Mr. Moore currently serves on the Museum Foundation and Board, is active in the Rollins Cooperative Parish and the Rollins Family Recreation Center, sings in the community choir and is instrumental in keeping the Rollins Cinema Club active. A special shout out to the movies for being the only, only cinema club left in the state of Wyoming. He also has served on the Library Foundation and Board, directed dramas for the Uplift Arts Council and led performances throughout the years. If there has been an opportunity to spread the joy of theater in our community, from nightly performances during the Tent City Historic Celebration to summer melodramas at the Sinclair Theater, to the filming of prison and more, you would find Mr. Moore leading the way. As a teacher for thirty-eight years here in Rollins, Mr. Moore taught thousands of students in his classroom and in the auditorium. While in the schools, his students won numerous state awards and were invited to perform all over the world, from Australia to Europe to throughout the United States. He was the state's thesbian director and received state drama director of the year. However, more importantly to me, Mr. Moore has always worked hard and supported the young adults here in his hometown every day. He appreciates the supportive and friendly nature of our community and how we all pull together to support our school activities and at like events like Music in the Park. He wants to remind people that no matter your passion, you can be involved and find ways to contribute. Support local business and find your unique way to keep our community strong. Overall, when I think of Mr. Moore, I know he is a true rock for our community. Thank you, Mr. Moore, for all the ways you have made Rollins a better place throughout the years.
I'm very humbled. I think there are a lot of other people in Rollins that are, uh, more deserving than I for this award, but I really do appreciate you folks doing this. As, uh, Myra had mentioned that my folks moved here in nineteen fifty-six, owned a business here and I know that it's been a problem for business owners in Rollins always that they encourage people to shop in Rollins. And I know that that was a definite thing that I think my, uh, folks really believed in too. And I still believe in that. I think that we all need to try to keep that in mind when we do that. But yes, Rollins has been my home for those many years since nineteen fifty-six and it will continue to be my home. And, uh, I'm very proud to be a Rollinsite and, uh, I would like to. I think the thing that I'm most proud of is that my entire family lives in Rollins. And would you all stand up? And I know that I was supposed to have kept this a secret, but I was told by Myra that I was supposed to invite my family. And so the very first day that I was finished talking to Myra, I told Steve that, uh, and he said, oh, the council's not supposed to know who this is going to be. And I said, I said, oops, well, I think I blew that, didn't I? So, yeah. No, uh, yeah, my sister came down from Casper. Anyway, I want to thank the committee. You people are awesome and, uh, as I said, I'm very humbled and I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Check and then you can grab the family.
Oh, wow.
I hear a thesbian back there.
His donation also goes to Park County Museum Foundation.
And that one with the family? Do you gotta get the background picture?
And Mr. Moore has decided to donate his $100 donation that comes from the council to the museum foundation.
Thank you very much and Larry, you taught a lot of students in your plays and you taught one adult too. Me. Yep, it was quite an experience I'll never forget.
Is it okay if I say something?
Sure, yes.
Oh, Larry, I was, you know, they mentioned the, the theater and the cinema club. We've been, what have we been doing that for? So, I mean, you were doing this before we took over the theater and that was in 2006 or '07, '16?
When I was still teaching and I Chuck Blodgett was the manager of the theater and my sister from Casper, they had a cinema club up there and she kept telling me all about the wonderful movies that they were having at the cinema club. And so I went to Mr. Blodgett and asked him if he, we could have one here and he thought, I'll never find one. And so I said, well, what can I do? So I went around and got eighty signatures and people said that they would be a part of it. And so, and right now, guys, we're the only one in Wyoming.
And what are we at now? Over, I think we're over a hundred?
Well, I think this last count was between, it was over, close to ninety, I think.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
So when we took over, one of the, he came to us and talked to us about this and we thought, yeah, this is, this would be a great thing. We, we ran a couple and then, and then we hit the panic button because picking those movies is not, it's not an easy thing to do. There's a, you know, because there's so many that are already out or not. And Larry has helped every year for 16 years orchestrate finding the correct movies, trying to get that together. And that group of people, we've, we've grown, we've had larger numbers than a hundred, we've had seventy, which just depends on the year. We, I've, it is a, it's, the group is awesome and you've done an amazing job and, and thank you because you
Thanks to your family too, because without you guys, we wouldn't be here today with that.
Well, we appreciate all your help because it is, it's all those people that come to that, they're, they, that's all we guess of your hard work for that.
We have an eight series, I mean, an eight movie series in the fall and in the spring. And hopefully we'll be able to continue with that. Really appreciate the support Rollins has given the cinema club and, and I'm proud to be a Rollinsite, I'll tell you that. So, thank you very much, folks. Do you have a written agenda? This thing's down again and
Did he give you a different error there?
It just said the site can't be reached and All right, thank you. All right, so let me catch up here. So the next thing, yeah, are we ready to move on? Okay, so the next thing on our agenda is a Parks, Parks and Rec, let's see, am I right?
Yeah.
Okay, Park and Rec Advisory Committee Appointment. So that's, I don't have the rest on my computer, so somebody help me out here.
We do have the potential appointee here for the Parks and Recreation Committee, Dr. Kristi Pellum.
Pellum.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Dr. Kristi Pellum and I'm interested in serving on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee if you'd have me. I've been in Rollins for the past 10 months. I'm just finished my first year of teaching at Rollins High School. I'm the computer science and engineering teacher, loving it. Going to be buying a house, hopefully, crossing my fingers, we close at the end of the month, so we're staying, so that's good. I've been in education for the past 21 years. Prior to that, I worked for the City of Rock Springs Parks and Recreation Department for about 12 years in a variety of positions. I've also been on a variety of elected and appointed boards in Sweetwater County, born and raised in Wyoming, so, yeah, so I'm just looking for something to give back. I love Rollins, what I've seen so far. Thought this would be a nice fit since I've taught about every age, a variety of things and coached and things. Any questions or anything?
I'd make a motion to approve Dr.
Kristi Pellum.
Kristi Pellum to the Rollins Recreation Advisory Board and I do not have the information for when the term is.
December 31st, 2025.
For a term ending December 31st, 2025.
Second.
A motion made and seconded to appoint
Kristi Pellum.
Kristi Pellum, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
To the
Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec, advise, without a computer, I'm
I get it.
Parks and Rec Advisory Committee for term ending in December of 2025?
December 31st, 2025.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
Yes.
Yes.
We're crashing and burning.
Mr. Mayor, this is just the printed copies of board docs.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Through executive section.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Online voting has closed, the motion passes with six yeas.
Okay, well, thank you and thank you for applying and welcome to Rollins and I hope you stay here forever.
I plan to retire here.
Good, me too. All right, so all right, so the next thing on our agenda is urban systems update to the city council and I will turn the floor over to their chairman, which is Judy Dixon. Thank you, Judy.
Okay, so I'm the, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, councilors, I'm the chairman of the Urban Systems Committee, which is why I was, I, they elected me there last, they thought this was part of my job, so.
Well, we're glad you're here.
Thank you, I'm always glad to be here. I was, I've been on the Urban Systems Board for a number of years and have been the chairman for about the last eight years. It's kind of a unfamiliar board to most people, but there is a elusive animal out there called the Transportation Commission of Wyoming, which is a cost sharing program, has a cost sharing program called the Urban Systems Program whereby the YDOT, the State of Wyoming, help fund projects, transportation projects that include city, county and YDOT. So in order to, it's a statute and so in order to have that and they, to fund these, this system, they have to have a board and so that's, that's where we come in. So the members are citizen members such as myself, appointed by county commissioners and by city council. And then we have 15 voting members, we have a member non-voting that comes from YDOT from Cheyenne for every meeting. And then YDOT here is heavily represented as well as the pertinent department heads like Cody for Public Works and Austin City Engineer and Jake Lund from YDOT. So people that are directly involved with transportation issues in the city. As I said, we have, we have 15 members, which sometimes is a challenge because we only are required by statute to meet twice a year and usually we meet at least three times a year. But it's a, it's a little difficult sometimes to make a lot of progress very quickly with that kind of schedule. And then with having as many committee members as we do, sometimes we'll have a quorum with seven and then, or a quorum with eight and discuss something, then the next meeting, four months later, we have a quorum, but a different seven. And so it's, sometimes it just takes a while, but what we do is try to pick projects that need to be funded or need to be built and look, completely research them and then make a recommendation to the city council. So the, the current, oh, and the other big, the big straight on that, which reminded me of what you said a while ago, it says in our bylaws that a member may not vote on a project which has been heard at more than one meeting unless that member has been present at all the meetings. So you can see where sometimes we get a little, a little hung up. Maybe they'll change that some one these days, but. So we have two projects currently that have been proposed and are we working on. One of them is the pedestrian underpass project, which is out, going to be between, across the 287 bypass between, right in the area of Aberdeen and 287, right between the soccer fields and the higher education center. And this whole thing, and we've probably looked at this for at least a decade, I'm sure, don't you think, Steve?
About that time?
They're, they've on the system as well. But, so the, the whole thing came about because of the Safe Funding for Schools Act, which was a statute a long time ago when they built the second Highland Hill School, the big school, the two through five. And there's just no way to safely get across 287. And since there's a school on that side where kids are coming from east of there and then Highland Hills has everybody going to higher ed, the high school, the rec center, soccer fields, baseball fields, and there's just, there needed to be a safety, a safety zone there. So in the planning then, and approved by the council, has been this project which is going to take a pedestrian tunnel under that highway. So needless to say, it's taken a lot of, a lot of research, but YDOT is usually the driving force behind most of these because they're the biggest agency and they usually assume most of the funding for it. So that's, that's the work, the work we're doing at the moment and it's probably going to start construction in 2025. The, the committees involved in YDOT has, does have a consultant that's coming in and surveying and looking to see exactly what needs to be done. Depends on grading and, you know, a ton of things, money for one thing. So, so that, that was a project that was well worth it and I'm looking forward to seeing that come to fruition. The other thing that we're looking at is the Sixth Street Overpass repairs over here because the, I don't know if you've noticed, things are falling off the bottom of the overpass and so we need to do something about it. And I say we, just because we get to look at the project, however, it's mostly funded by YDOT. UP might have some, of course, involvement in it and then the city is going to have very little financial involvement except we may have to provide flaggers and pay for flaggers and things like that. And then if it comes to pass and if it is allowable and we have to do, I say we loosely, if YDOT has to do more work than, than they want, I think, we're going to try and look at putting a sidewalk, a pedestrian sidewalk across the Sixth Street Overpass again. That's been suggested and that was there originally when it was built and then taken out as it was upgraded, so. So those are the two projects that, that we've been looking at and working on for the past little while here. And some of the future projects are Airport Road redo, which sadly needs it. Again, this is a road well used by city, county and YDOT. The Alton Lane Extension is a road that has been looked at ever since Walmart came in and it's, it's a road that when you come down the 287 bypass and cross Cedar, it's, you'll keep going straight, that'll be extended and then by Rollins Glass and then take, take a left and then a straight over to, behind the hotels into Walmart. So this was looked at very seriously when they came in and then YDOT was able to really speed things up and jump the gun and do their project of the light, the traffic light out there, that, that controlled corner for Walmart, so.
On that road back there, isn't there a problem with a major gas line that comes into town that's too high to accommodate a road there without major reconstruction?
I don't know, because it's never been pursued that far. These are just really kind of superficial ideas.
Okay.
Well, not superficial, but you know, they just, we just kind of got into one layer and they're just things that have been identified as possible needs.
Because if you go past Burger King, you go up on that hill and that's kind of where that road would be, is back in there and that gas line I was told was, when it was put in, was put in, not thinking about a road being there and so it's too high and all that. Anyway, I just wondered if you knew about that.
I don't, no, because it's never, hasn't got that far. These are just things that have been presented that, that have been suggested that we look at. And then also the extension of Brook Street is another one that, Brook Street comes down by the high school and the middle school and then you have to either turn left or right on Harshman. And so it's been recommended that the city extend Brook Street over to the 287 bypass. So those are, and again, those are just, you know, things that, they've just been suggestions of through the months and years that people would like to see happen, so. Those are just things that are brought up periodically as possible projects for the future.
I see.
Would that be the back of Green Acres then?
Yes, yeah, just straight on through, I think it would have to do away with the little airport, little model plane airport, probably. But I don't know, and like I say, it's just, those are just ideas. So those are things out there and of course, if anybody has suggestions that involve transportation improvement, please bring them to your, your council people or your, your board or bring them to me and I'll take it for a suggestion. The city council, there's a, there's a city council ordinance that governs, after the state statute, then there's an ordinance that governs the Urban Systems Committee. However, we're the only state or city in Wyoming that is governed by an ordinance. So the other thing that we're talking about and has been recommended by YDOT is that we come to the council, we make up a resolution and bring it to the council and see if we can't change the ordinance to a resolution, which would make it a lot more flexible and a lot quicker a lot of times to work if changes need to be made. So that's another little, little things we've been looking at as well. These are also four-year terms as the Parks and Rec Membership Board is and the YDOT, where it comes into the funding, the State of Wyoming and YDOT give, contribute to the city money every year to be used on these joint projects. Around $170,000 to $180,000 a year is what they, they contribute toward the, toward these projects. I think this committee's done a, a good job and of course, it's been here a long time, the committee has, but we actually have a balance in the funding of 1.7 million. So most of that will probably be used on the underpass or the walking underpass. But that's, that's, would be the, the urban systems and the cities' part of their expenditure on that. That's pretty much the overview. If, if anybody has any questions or, again, it's just a recommending body, a lot of people looking at different ideas to try and bring it in and make a looking at different ideas to try and bring it in and make a recommendation for the council.
Are there any questions or comments? I would just like to thank you for all your work on that. It's, it's hard to go to work and work real hard and then don't do it for three months and go to, you know, and then feel like you get anything done. And I, I was on that board a while myself and so it, it can seem a little dry at times, but you sure accomplished a lot of good things, so.
Great, thank you. And YDOT's the driving, kind of the driving force behind it, so. Thank you.
Hey, thanks. Hey, Judy. These are thank you cards for the urban system committee members and I would like to give them to you for you to hand out. These are cards of appreciation from the council to your board members.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Myra, for reminding me. Great memory, just short. All right. So the next thing on our agenda is a report from DDA, Main Street and Hub reports. And I'll turn the floor over to you, Pam.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Seems like it's been a while since I've been up here. Lots going on. The first thing I wanted to remind everybody is it's our downtown Super Saturday, this Saturday, you know, we don't call it cleanup day or anything, it's a Super Saturday. And it's our annual, we come down and just take care of things and little spring cleaning. Something I was really hoping was going to happen tonight is I was going to bring in some people from the community. He and his daughter come down and make music at least once it gets warmer weather. They have this song that they've created at Kids Corner on our musical equipment. And I have asked them multiple times if I could tape them or video with them and then just show you guys. But I mean, his little girl writes music because of that Kids Corner. And so, you know, just the support you've had to do this project and the Carbon County School Board REC grant that has helped pay for that. It's not the favor I was looking for, but. So yeah, so it just is a great spot, the Kids Corner, but the whole area, you know, once the splash pad's going, but it just, one day he caught me about two and a half years ago and he says, you know, my daughter is musically inclined because of that area. So it was just a really good, it's a lot, thousands and thousands of hours from Peggy Colson to the city to everybody working together. So we're going to do some little spring cleaning from nine to ten thirty, or nine to eleven thirty on Saturday. And my husband says there is not an eleven thirty stop time. When Pam says stop, we stop. So the next thing I want to show you is this is the summer version of the, we call it the Terra Way. We give it to the old pen, all the hotels. We usually bind them and in, on the corners and then they can just leave a matter underneath. And it's just a really good map and it really shows all the different businesses. Did we miss a?
Carbon County Public Health should be under health.
Where is it?
I think it's under government offices.
We will actually move that. I haven't finished printing. This is, this is what's nice. We used to do, no, I love that. Anytime, that's why this is a really good story, is we used to spend thousands of dollars and send these away, right, Myra? And print these at, you know, in thousands. Now we print these in-house for this exact reason and we print them quarterly. So if businesses change, when businesses add, we add tours and everything. But it's just been a really, like, I've already had people calling me like, where's the summer version? I'm like, it's coming. We've just trying to get final names on some new businesses in downtown. So we will make sure the public health is under health also.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other suggestions? We're always, that's, it's a working document. The third thing I have is, is Summer Fest Takeover. So with the recent changes in my office, we, DDA, are not going to be doing Summer Fest this year. We are actually letting it be taken over by, when I started calling some of our partners on this, they were like, what do you mean, we're not having Summer Fest? What do you mean we're not? And I said, well, you could always take it over and, you know, and they're like, we could take it over. And then, and then pretty soon I got some more people together and they're like, let's just call it Summer Fest Takeover. So the Car and Bike Show, Outlaw Show and Shine, and the new group, the Rollins Jeep, Jeep Club, Rollins Outlaw Jeep Club, that has just recently started, Casey Daniels is going with that. They're gonna, they're all gonna come together. We're still going to have an event on that Saturday, the eighth. I'm going to still help them a little bit on some key things. The food vendors are, had already turned in all their information. So it's just gonna be a little different, but we're still going to have a great event in downtown, but it's going to be taken over by other people. And then last, I want to give you guys some hub numbers. We've been extremely busy at the Business Innovation Hub. I think I told you the last, I think it was April, the last time I was here, we were averaging probably like three to five a week. Now I'm averaging anywhere from four to ten people coming through the door, whether it's expansion or needing to know rules. I mean, I spent the whole time with a new business, a mobile business that he's working on and state statute and things, and that happened on Friday. So yeah, it's just really exciting that, you know, when we rebranded, but everybody's, I mean, he's going to be a mobile, he's going to cover all of Carbon County. So again, this facility is really being used by everybody. So, yeah. And then Impact Carbon County, we're going to meet with them this week on Thursday and get the next Carbon County Startup Challenge going and get some dates put on the calendar for the next Carbon County Startup Challenge. Any questions?
A lot of great work. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
We appreciate it. All right. Next thing on our agenda is city manager reports and staff reports. I'll turn the floor over to you, Tom.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. To report tonight, I'd like to start off by asking our city engineer, Austin Gilbert. He's got a quick update for us.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, I just wanted to give you an update on the Davis Street Extension Project. WLC Engineering has completed the survey. They've sent us the deliverables for the electronic files and we're able to move forward now with the design of the project. Right now I do not have the software to do the work. We've just been in such a state of change at the city where it's been difficult to get AutoCAD. And so to produce a set of plans, things like that, some designs based on the survey, we're going to have to get that installed on my machine or maybe even consider having a consultant do the design is also another option. That's something I'm willing to do, but at this time, it's just a process of getting our new IT support here at the city to get that on my, on my computer, so. And WLC Engineering did a really good job in terms of the quality of the survey, just looking at it and viewing the shots that they took. There's a lot of data and a really high-quality survey that they provided to the city at a pretty good value. I just wanted to share that.
No surprises in that survey? Very scary stuff?
You know, it's hard to know exactly because I'm only able to, only able to read it on the online version of AutoCAD. So it's, it's hard to see. But in terms of just the general properties of the survey, I haven't seen too many outliers or anything like that.
We don't have an AutoCAD program?
We do have it budgeted. It's just we haven't had an opportunity to have it installed because of the amount of change in personnel and whatnot.
I mean, forever. We should have had a, an old one. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Just seems odd that we wouldn't have one. Nothing bad, I'm just flabbergasted we don't have one.
Yes, sir. It's something that we should do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Austin. A couple just small announcements. One is, is the Wyoming Association of Municipalities, their summer conference will be from June sixth through the ninth. It will basically be the rest of this week. I will be attending as well as several of the council members. While I am out, the acting city manager will be Chief Blaine Schumacher. Will be in charge when I'm out, so if anybody needs to reach someone at the city, he'll be the man. We will have a special council meeting on Wednesday, June fourteenth at seven thirty. And what that special meeting will entail is the third and final reading of the budget. So tonight after this, we will go through the second reading and that will be the third. The last announcement is June twenty-second will be our first Music in the Park. So summer is upon us and we hope to see everybody there, so.
Yep, it's always a good time. Anything else, Tom?
That's it.
All right. Next thing on our agenda is direction from city council, city manager and city attorney. Is there anything anybody would like to bring up?
I just want to update a little bit on the tattoo ordinance. I've done some research on the public health end and I got some documents from Sweetwater County on how they do it. What we're running into is the enforcement side of things. The county could potentially take on enforcement, but it would come with a cost. So I wanted to update the public that if they're looking into it, it's just a lot more complicated than it originally appeared. And no other counties besides the independent counties do it this way. And so we're still looking into it. It's just a lot more confusing and we've been in contact with the county on some discussions, but it's gonna, it's gonna take time, so.
Yeah, it's a lot more complicated than at first a person thinks, but I do appreciate your work on that. Anything else? All right. We will move on to, let me flip the page here. We will go on to the second reading of the budget. And I will turn the floor over to you, Tom.
Right. Thank you, Honorable Mayor.
Wait a minute. I will not yet. I need a motion.
I would make a motion, but I don't have access to Word docs at all.
Councilman Garner?
I'm going to approve the second reading and waive the reading of the ordinance for the fiscal year 2023 to 2024 municipal budget.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to approve the second reading and waive the reading of the ordinance for the fiscal year 2023, 2024 municipal budget. Is there any discussion? Tom?
It's your turn.
I will share some things.
Okay, well, I'm just sitting there looking, nobody had questions. I was just gonna go a different way, but go ahead, Tom.
Make it shorter. No, as, as you saw this, this weekend, I sent out to everybody a, a second draft of the budget, which we will use for the second reading. You'll see a lot of changes in there from the first reading. I have included into the second reading a lot of the narrative that I should be in a budget, so we focused mostly on the numbers at first. And I will walk you through a lot of what those changes are and that, the narrative that's in there. Where I would like to start is I, I sent you a quick PowerPoint presentation. And what you'll see on the screens above you is in the far left-hand column is the numbers for the general fund that came right out of the first reading of the budget. And it was on page nine. And that is our starting point for tonight. And then what I would like to do is to walk you through the changes that we made that will get us to the numbers presented in the second reading of the budget, which you will find at the far right-hand side of the screen. So as you can see, the first reading, we still had a lot of work to do. We had about seven hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars that we, we needed to, to find to balance the budget, to bring current year revenues in alignment with the current year expenditures. So the first thing that we talked about at the first reading was the freezing of several positions. And if you go to the second screen, right here is a list of the seven positions that, that we are recommending to be frozen, moving into the budget. You will see the salary portion, the benefits portion, and then the total. So the first version of, of the budget, we had these in, in the front. Now we actually have them into the budget itself, into the budget document with those removed from the departmental budgets. So the overall total there is five hundred forty-two thousand and ninety-nine dollars that we will basically move into a frozen category. Okay, if you go back to the front page. All right, so that's the second, second column. As, as we move over, one of the changes that we looked at was in the capital that we had. So what we had originally budgeted in the first reading was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for capital. Now if you'll switch a couple down. So as we went through that list, one more down. Sorry. As we went through that list, as a staff with, with department heads, what we, we did here is we looked to see if we could lower some of these amounts for next year so that we, we could take it out of capital instead of salaries or other portions of the budget. So as you can see, the first one is under Public Works. We had a new seventeen-yard dump truck. It was, we had, we had budgeted for that to be purchased new. And what we, we found through discussion is that we can overhaul engine and do other repairs to that truck to where we can get more years out of that. And we felt that at this point with our budget situation, we felt like that was the wisest move. And so instead of buying new to the repairs, we can reduce the capital budget by a hundred and forty thousand that we had originally budgeted in there. So that would bring that line item down to fifty thousand dollars. The snow blower unit under recreation, we will try to work with streets and other areas on the snow removal and we will push that off one more year. Under the overhead doors, we were able to, to, to find in the current year budget seven thousand dollars that we were able to move from last year to, to the current year without going over budget. So for next year's budget, we would reduce that to eight thousand. And then to, to bring the overall budget into balance, we use the VFW ball fields and we would reduce that from thirty thousand to twenty-three thousand eight seventy-one. And so, so that number is an odd number, but that's the exact number after all the changes we made that we needed to balance the budget, to bring revenues into expenses. So if you, if you think that's an odd number, it is, but that's how we arrived at that. And we, we feel that twenty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-one is a very good start to those ball fields. It, it isn't the full ask, but we can, we can do things that will improve the fields immensely during that time. So overall, we would recommend a reduction in the So overall, we would recommend a reduction in the capital from the original budget of about $193,129 that would be removed that would help us bring the budget in into balance. So that is the general fund capital. I I do have that I will show here in a few moments, the carryover capital from 2023, the current year that we're in. There's a lot of capital that that we have ordered. They're out on RFPs, but we just cannot get it in right now. And I will share that with you, what they are and the overall numbers. Okay, so that is the the capital. The next column over is the nonprofit auxiliary allocations that we that we have. And through the formula that that we came up with at the at the at the first reading of the budget, if you would go down now, right here, I have several columns here that I would share with you. The one on the the left is the budget as it was presented in the first reading. And the total allocations were 226,100. And then the next column is the ask that each of the organizations made to the council. And what we, the formula that we used to to determine the proposed amount is the lower of the amount that was allocated in fiscal year 2023 or the amount of the ask. It was the lower of the two. So if you could see in the budget reduction, we had two that lowered their ask for us. And so the child development, the budget last year was 1,200, 600. They asked for 9,000, so we reduced that to their ask. And the other is the Boys and Girls Club. They had 15,000 in '23 and they asked for 10, so it was lowered. The far right-hand column is where the ask was higher than the budget from '23. And so we lowered that to, like I said, the the higher of the ask or the budget from the year before. So you can you can see that the overall allocations were reduced, $8,600. And from the ask that the organizations had, the asks were reduced $20,000 to match that formula. So we added the $8,600 into the reductions within the general fund budget. The next column on the inter-fund transfers. The water fund, sewer fund especially, we were transferring money from those funds to the general fund to help cover services that the general fund was performing for those funds. And what we what we found is in the current year is that there just aren't the resources in the water fund and the sewer fund to cover those. It would put those funds into a deficit position to where we would have to transfer cash from the general fund to the water fund to turn around and transfer it back to the general fund. So so on those, in the first reading, we took it down to zero. But one of those transfers that we looked at that that I feel should be included in there is the repairs to the equipment. Because that is performed in the the central shop of the general fund, they perform all the repairs to all of the different funds. And and that is one area where there actually is a direct cost that is being absorbed in the general fund. So what you'll see there under the central shop is in addition to revenue of $84,988. And there is a slide down below that will show where those funds are. They get good at that. As to as to the transfer to the the general fund. So so those are just estimated amounts of the of the repairs. Now, the the next item to be discussed, we've had a transfer that has hit the the general ledger now for many years. And I wasn't sure what that was, and so I researched what it was. And it's always been called the Murray Street Transfer. That's just that's just what I knew that it was from the general ledger. So when I researched this, it goes back to 2009. In 2009, the city did a project on Murray Street, okay, that was paid for out of the general fund. So the so the general fund picked up the cost of the Murray Street project. Well, a majority of that project on Murray Street was to improve, replace, enhance the wastewater system that was underneath that street or on that street. And so the decision was made in 2009 that that overall amount that was wastewater, what we would do is divide that over 20 years. And each year for 20 years, we would transfer that that amount from the sewer wastewater fund to the general fund to repay that. Okay, the proper accounting for that would would have been to set up a due to, due from in the different different funds and just pay that back. But the way that it has worked is is we actually transfer that and recognize that in the general fund as revenue each year. And so when I went back to 2009, if you'll go down to here, yep, I found a letter from the finance director at that time to the city manager explaining the situation. When I when I read that, it says that the agreement was $939,000 that would be transferred. And if you read down in the second paragraph there, it says 20 years and they had an amount of 54,000. Well, the first year in 2009, it was 54,000, but the amount changed each subsequent year to 69,770. And I'm not, I I don't know, I I could not find any documentation on that. But if you take the amount within this letter of 939,000, and if you take all of the transfers to date, instead of taking 20 years to pay that off, it would have been paid off in fiscal year 2022 with a little bit extra. So if you take all of the transfers to date, it adds up to 1,031,000 on the right. And so for fiscal year '24, I feel that that obligation has been satisfied. And I don't feel any further need to transfer funds over there. I think it has been complete as far as the documentation that I can see. So for fiscal year '24, what you'll see up above is is that I removed the transfer. And if you look at the total amount transferred, I think we have over transferred about 100 and some thousand dollars that was on the bottom. And so in fiscal year '23, we can back off this year's transfer, you know, since we are still in that year, even though it is budgeted. And that would that would bring this down to about $22,000 that we would be over the documented amount. We could either, you know, you know, do an amendment to transfer that, or we could recognize that as interest expense throughout that time. But anyway, that that that's what I could find on the Murray Street extension. So it was included in the original budget. I have backed that out in the second reading, under the the under the impression that that has been paid. On the first first version of the or the first reading, I I failed to include interest income on impact assistance on that schedule, so I have added that in. The next item is we had several grants that we were working on through recreation. And we knew at the time of the first reading that the grant expenditures would equal the grant revenues. And so to to balance the budget, it it really wasn't necessary to add those in. But to to get the overall cost correct now, we we have detailed out the rec center grants that we know of at this time with the expenditures. And in those totals, 601,450. And if you go clear clear down almost to the bottom of the slide, right there, you can see the the grants that we are applying for. Some of those we've already, you know, have the verification that we will receive. But as you can see, the 601,450 has been added to recreation expenditures, and we have added the related revenue to the revenue side. So so those will wash within the budget, but they will increase the revenues and they will increase the expenditures.
Are those grants pretty? Are we pretty sure we're gonna get those?
Pretty firm that we will receive those.
Okay.
There were a couple miscellaneous items in there that that we adjusted. A lot of it was a small change in the workers' comp rates that were very small, but we wanted to get those in. So as you could see, on the right-hand side, far right-hand side, you will see the general fund budget at the time of the second reading is is balanced. We have brought it to zero there. And so I I've watched you from the first to the second with those items. The only thing in here that I recommend is that we really watch our financial statements into next year. And I will do my best to have those out monthly. And we will really watch the overall revenues to make sure that that they are matching. And if they fall short, we'll have to revisit some of the expenditures to keep it in balance.
I I honestly think we'll be ahead of the game, but just because that's kind of where we're trending. I pray I pray we are, because I don't want to leave those positions frozen very long.
Yep, and and I will again commit tonight, I really think that the answer to a lot of our our budget crisis is getting down into business plans. It comes down to planning. It comes down to what is needed, defining services, reporting those to the council to make sure that that is our priority, the services offered and how we are offering those. So we will work at that really hard. After the budget is 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 complete, we'll we'll start holding meetings to define our services and what, you know, we can do with the budget we have. Our 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 first goal, of course, is to reinstate the frozen positions. And the second is the capital items. If if we stay at this level of spending on capital, it will catch up with us very soon to where we're gonna have some large, large items. Just to walk you through some of the changes within the book, my goal is, within a couple years, I'd like to submit the the budget to the GFOA for the distinguished budget award. And I have I I printed that application out today, and it's eight pages of detail. And each one of those is a large thing within the budget. I will say we're about halfway there, that that's about where we're at. So you will see in here, in the second second draft, you will see a budget message in there. And you will also see in there information about the city of Rawlins. You'll see a lot of statistics, you know, Rawlins at a at a glance, you you'll you'll see what we've we've done as as far as all the the statistics that we track. You'll see all the boards and commissions. And then and then just three other things, and I'll wrap this up. Under the all-city, all-fund citywide summary on page 31, I added a a couple couple statements right here that I wanted to show you kind of how they worked. Yeah, if you just scroll up just a little bit on that page. Right, right, right there, yeah. So if you look under, you know, the proposed column, this is all funds. So this is the general, the enterprise, the capital projects, internal service, it's the whole city. And if you look at the total revenue, total revenue there for all funds is 23,37,660. You look at the expenditures for those, what you will see is that the revenue is about 364,000 higher. So the way that that you can interpret this is under the reserves used excess, which is about halfway down, you will see general fund. And if you go over to the right where it is zero, that means that we are in balance for the general fund. The next column down is capital projects. So whatever we have budgeted in revenue, we have budgeted in expenditures. And that way you can see that 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 fund is in balance. And the internal service fund at the bottom, you can see the same. However, under enterprise funds, there's a positive 364,000. So what what that means for the enterprise funds, we're we're not presenting a a balanced budget. We're revenues equal expenditures. We are presenting in in total a a budget that has 364,000 more in revenue than we do in expenditures, and that budget would put that into cash reserves at the end of the year. So you could look at this statement and see that we are in balance. And then the total revenue and reserves used equals the total expenditures below to show that overall we are in balance. So that is is one statement I wanted to show. Another one is under fund reserves. Under the first draft of the budget, I just combined everything as far as fund reserves, kind of where we're starting and where we're moving to. And so what what I have in here is is I have schedules that go clear back to is, is I have schedules that go clear back to two thousand and eighteen. Because I, I know this is one of the areas that we've wanted to see where our fund ba, fund balance cash reserves has been to where it is today, kind of how we got here. So the revenues in, expenditures out each year, and I flow it through to here, to two thousand and twenty-four. And what I want to point out here is the revenues and the expenditures there are right out of the budget. Okay, so those aren't the projected. Those are out of the, the budget book for this year. Hopefully by the third reading of the, of the budget, I, I will have the projected ones for this year. That's the work that I have between now and then is the projected. But the reason that I point this out is we're gonna have a large carryover of capital budget. Okay, and how does that affect cash reserves? Well, this is the budget number, so they're all in this right now. If we do not carry it over, it would be removed out of here. And so I wanted to show for now what, what it would look like if we spanned the, the budget out. So what I'm gonna show you for capital carryover, what, what'll happen at, at, at the end of the year is the unspent amounts will roll into cash reserves. And then we would have to pull those out of reserves to make those purchases. But at the end of the process, it would reflect what we have here. It's just a timing between the current year or we pull it out of reserves next year. So right here is what the budget would show. So one last item to show in here is, let's see, page sixty-one. Sixty-two. Sixty-three. Sixty-three. So within your budget books, what I have for you is the, the budget amount for fiscal year twenty-three, right out of last year's budget book. These are the actual amounts that we budgeted for capital. The middle column is what we have expended as of May thirty-first. So if the item has been purchased, it will show up there, and the carryover in the far right-hand column will be zero because we purchased the item. It is completed in this year. So the ones on the far right over there are the carryover of the, of the general fund items that we, we have not received yet. Okay, they have not been paid for. And so, so you, you, you can see what the items are on the far left. And if you would scroll down, Wendy, you can see right there that five hundred and forty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one thousand is as of right now what we would carry over into next year if we maintain last year's budget. That's just the, the calculation of it. So, so general fund is there. If you scroll down a little bit, you'll see the enterprise funds. And right here, what you'll see are the impact assistance funds. Okay, so we had capital in the general fund, and then we also have capital that we're purchasing impact assistance, which is also general fund, but we break it out, you know, for tracking purposes. And there is a much larger amount in impact assistance. The, the water infrastructure needs there is the match for the ARPA III grant, and it also contains two hundred thousand for the design of the SCADA system. Both of those things are moved to next year. And then down below that, you will see the enterprise funds, I believe, on the next page. So there's about six hundred and eight thousand of enterprise funds that we have not received in. On the ordinance that I have in here that is, is just a running document right now, we have not run that past the city attorneys. I wanted you to see what it would look like when it goes through. You, you will see on there all of the general fund departments, the enterprise, and all those costs that balance the budget. And then you will see down below the carryover for the capital, which will pull those out of reserves.
So when they go into the reserve, are they going in, they're going in assigned?
Correct.
To, to their specific job that they're going to carry over into?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep, so that's where the, the capital would go. So with that, I would entertain any, any questions that the council may have or concerns?
Just real, the, on the recycling center, on the baler, the baler's supposed to be the sixty-five. The concrete being the twenty? Am I reading that wrong? Is the concrete gonna be sixty-five thousand? And the baler's gonna be twenty thousand?
It, it could be flipped. I don't have that document.
I just seen that and I didn't.
I will look that. I'll make sure that's correct.
Who has his hand up?
Yeah, oh.
On the, the concrete, the original was sixty-five. And then the twenty was gonna be for an additional small compactor. But since we're getting the, the big one, that twenty is gonna be added to the sixty-five for the concrete.
Okay. I just, I just wondered because we did.
Yeah.
Definitely wasn't.
Yeah, that twenty will be, that was for the small compactor for the ones that we have in there now. Because the original plan was to replace one every year of the small ones. And since we have the big one, then the big one's gonna take that place.
Okay, is there, is there any, any other questions that I could answer? If, if not, I will not probably add a lot to this for this year for the third and final reading. What I will probably do is just take the draft off of the front. And then at the second hearing, what we will do is, is I will have these printed out for those that would like a printed copy of it. We've got some, some binders for that. And, and then on the fourteenth, we'll do just a quick, quick third reading of it before it's adopted, so.
Hey, any questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Tom. So I guess we can, yeah, is there no questions whatsoever? I want to give everybody a chance for a vote. So, okay, please open online voting, and I'll vote yes.
Online voting is open.
I'll vote yes too, Lynn.
Yes.
I finally hotspotted mine off my phone. I had to finally hotspot mine off my phone. It's how I got my door. I tried both of the cities, and I couldn't either one.
Online voting has caused the motion passes with six yes.
All right, thank you. Tom, amazing job. I, I don't know how you do it, but I.
I'm glad you like to do it.
Very, very appreciative of all your hard work.
Thank you.
It's by far been the best budget year that I've been on the council.
Well, it's just gonna get better and better.
And you're the oldest on the council.
All right, so let's see. The next thing on our agenda, unless I've mixed my pages up, is approve the minutes of May twenty-fourth, special meeting minutes. I would entertain a motion. Vice Mayor Sanger.
I move that we approve the minutes for May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three special council meeting.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to approve the May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three special council meeting minutes as presented. Is there any discussion?
How many does it take to approve?
Uh, four. Well, let's see, a quorum would be, what, how many? Four?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, Chris here, I don't think it'll pass.
Councilmember Weisenberg is not here.
Okay, so who, who all missed that one?
So the only ones that were present were you, the mayor, councilmember Seeloff, councilmember Weisenberg, excuse me, and Vice Mayor Sanger were here for that special council meeting.
Okay, so we're going to have to put this off for lack of quorum. How do we do that?
It, it's a majority of the persons who were present, so we have a quorum.
Okay.
So for this vote, as long as there is a majority vote of those four people, it can pass.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so there's been a motion made and seconded to approve these minutes. The only three that can vote actually are Steve, myself, and, and councilman. So at this time, I, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. So the next thing on our agenda is to approve the Fourth of July fireworks. And I would entertain a motion.
You have the minutes of the May sixteenth.
There's another set of minutes.
Oh, is there?
It just got a sequence.
Okay, well, that was, okay.
Probably not on your print.
Right, okay. And they're for what, what?
May sixteenth. May sixteenth.
Okay. I would entertain a motion for that.
I move to approve the May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three regular council meeting minutes.
Second. There been a motion made and seconded to approve the May twenty.
May sixteen.
May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes as presented. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Yes, sir?
And I just need the abstain for this. That's correct. Thank you.
Hey, do I hear a second? Did I hear a second?
Sure.
Okay. Any further comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I guess, I don't know how many of us are hooked up and not. So, okay, we're good. All right, so now are we on to the fireworks? Okay.
Hold on a moment. The motion carries with five yes and one abstain.
Okay, so.
So fireworks, we are there.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion at this time. Councilman Wells.
I have moved to approve the Fourth of July fireworks. The request authorizing the Rawlins Fire Department to proceed with the Fourth of July fireworks show for Independence Day celebration in accordance with the City of Rawlins Municipal Code nine point three two oh four oh C.
Do I hear a second? Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded to approve the request authorizing the Rawlins Fire Department to proceed with the Fourth of July fireworks show for Independence Day celebration in accordance with the City of Rawlins Municipal Code nine point three two point oh four oh C. Is there any discussion? And I would turn the floor over to you.
Honorable mayor and members of the council, if there are any questions, let me know. As you know, we do this every year.
You know, last year there were seventeen duds, if I counted them correctly.
We, you're just about right. We, there were some issues with our banding straps that we had on them, and we have rectified that for this year. So we are looking forward to getting a.
I just wondered if that was.
A full go.
If it was a, a problem with the supplier or what?
Actually, it was not. No, it was, it was hardware, so we, we did replace that.
It was a great show anyway, I gotta tell you.
But you are, you are correct in that. So we'll start our set up at three o'clock. Ten o'clock's gonna be go time, obviously in the hours of darkness. And we have asked BLM and Carbon County Fire to come out with us again to help us, and they have agreed to do that. So besides that, you all know what happens. We're gonna all have a good time.
Yeah. All right, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, opposed, same sign. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, sir.
Yep. All right, next thing on the agenda is to award a bid. Councilman Garner.
I move to approve the bid for the ADA compliant doors located at City Hall, five twenty-one West Cedar Street in Rawlins Family Recreation Center, sixteen sixteen Harshman Street in Rawlins, Wyoming, in the amount of sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars, including the doors plus installation at both locations.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to approve the bid for the ADA compliant doors located at City Hall, five twenty-one West Cedar Street in Rawlins Family Recreation Center, sixteen sixteen Harshman Street in Rawlins, Wyoming, in the amount of sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars, including the doors plus installation at both locations. Is there any discussion? And Lou, I'll let you tell us what we're doing here.
Honorable mayor and council, we went out to bid. We had one bid from Rawlins Glass, which Reed Holmes is here tonight. If I didn't make the walkthrough, so if there's any questions, Reed's a guy to talk to. But we had discussed the best location for City Hall, and it was brought up, maybe the front door, but then we'd have to do a lot of landscaping and take the trees down that been there for a while. So we're gonna utilize the back door and the ramp that's already in place and just put the electronics on the back, put the push hardware to, to open them. Now, the ones at the, the rec center, we're gonna basically get the whole set of doors on the entrance. I know Ms. Wells here goes to the rec center quite a bit, and trying to get on that north door there, it takes quite a bit to get it open. So that problem will be alleviated, and the ADA doors will be on the south side. So if you're looking at the rec center, they're gonna be on the south side going in and.
On the left side as you walk up to the building?
Yes, sir. And it, it'll improve that, that entranceway quite a bit with them doors.
I wondered who that was back there with the beard? I haven't seen who's beard, Reed. All right, is there any other questions? Comments, questions? All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. All right.
Thank you, mayor and council.
Thank you. Thank you, Reed. All right. So the next thing on our agenda is YDOT, a resolution to approve a YDOT grant. Councilman Lumen.
I move to approve YDOT Highway Traffic Safety Administration, NHTSA, grant in the amount of twelve thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents to cover overtime of Rawlins police officers for two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four.
Been a motion made and seconded to approve YDOT Highway Traffic Safety Administration grant in the amount of twelve thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents to cover overtime of Rawlins police officers for year twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
This is money that YDOT grants every year, and our police department uses it to conduct safety. So when our officers are actually off duty, they have the opportunity to work overtime paid through this grant to monitor traffic safety specifically for seat belts and speeding and things like that. And they do that on their off time, and the way they're paid is through this grant, and we apply for this every year.
Okay. Is there any questions? Anybody have any questions or comments? All right, thank you. Please, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Next thing on our agenda is executive session. And Jacqueline, Councilman Wells, sorry. As it gets later, I get goofy.
I move to go to the executive session per Wyoming Statute sixteen four four oh five at nine oh nine P.M. To consider or receive any information classified as confidential by law and to consider the appointment, employment, right to practice or dismiss of a public officer, professional person, or employee, or to hear complaints or charges brought against an employee, professional person, or officer. Unless the employee, professional person, or officer requests a public hearing, the governing body may exclude from any public or private hearing during examination of a witness. Any or all witnesses in the matter being investigated following the hearing or executive session, the governing body may deliberate on its decision in executive session.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to go into executive session at, what'd you say, nine oh eight?
Nine oh nine.
Nine oh nine P M. Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. I don't think so. Yes, so I'll call you. Are you gonna stay?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was at my-
You were at your board desk.
Yes, my computer almost did.
I see it. Well, you got it.
Does that make sense?
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, thank you.
Yep, thank you too.
They're in trouble, that's for sure. I just hope that we can figure it out, 'cause it's, it's gonna be a long, hard path. I don't know, it feels like even our, even our health is not really understanding our needs. Okay. So. All folks, I'll talk to you. We just wanna do what's good for the cities. So many good things. Yeah. Feels like you're- On your- Uh, environment, the guard, the city. Oh.
Okay.
Oh.
I'm gonna do the one outside thing.
Okay, I was just gonna drop that down.
Uh, I'll let him come back in if that's okay.
That's perfect.
Um, can I just have some room?
Yeah.
He told me about that.
Yeah, so if you're downtown, you're going out to West Stroud and I would do it. And it's slow, everything's slippery. You don't know. Um, yeah. If you know where to get your house, it's there. Washington, so right across the street.
Yeah, he's like, um, I'm not, uh, um, what's that, uh, I believe.
Yeah. But that's that's up here, it's just you can work in the east, it's right there. You can, you know, cool, like, up up third level, there's a pile, so I mean, it's like, uh, all the way. The chapel, one chapel. This is. I was sitting there with a hat, yeah.
It's hard to breathe, man.
We were sitting there looking at Alex, and all of a sudden, the object inside us, it slipped up to the floor. To the hole that we had. Kicked it off, killed that guy, like, there's the car. Bob was ready to kill himself. Uh, yes. Our urgency. A lot of things that aren't sure about that right now. They have, oh, oh. They ask, uh, uh, what you're all people.
No, no, is that what you?
You stand up there. So far.
America.
Yeah. I don't think that might be so proud.
But really, sorry, I just, I'm very beginning to notice. That was very important.
Oh, I was gonna get this. Sorry. Thank you. Um.
You got the door, right?
No, but I'm going out that way, so I'll lock it and wait.
Okay.
Alright, I gotta do a public hearing notice for this fourteen, 'cause I'm not able to, so I gotta get it done now.
Okay.
I'm just gonna.
Then this is a paper.
I'm just gonna sit here.
Okay, thank you.
Alright.
Yeah. How do you do it? So, so the way, and then I kind of. Now, now, first of all, I would rather. For those. Do it. Very often, I got out on the side of the road, and other parts I get, I'm just gonna tell. And there, and I was just like. Well, it was dirty, but yeah, I just love it. But. I don't know how they, I just do their part. They always forget, you know.
I don't know, but these are so bad.
And I didn't think, uh, I didn't want to do. And there there was one song that really did, uh, a bunch of jello.
Yeah.
It could, I got, yeah, yeah.
I think that would be my name.
The only one is, was, was a song that, uh. Uh.
I think I know a bit of that.
And well, it had, 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 had the, uh, had the general story, it's, uh. All does it, uh, don't you, uh, know.
Yeah.
Like, uh, it's like, you know, uh, and then they, they're always, you know.
Yeah.
So we go, uh, 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 uh. It's the most, because I think it was funny. And while I was out, you, when I went through the restroom, my order came back from table. And she ate my food. And her lover, like, she knew I was fine enough, but it looked like someone ate my food. And then she just looked out.
Oh, I just had to.
And then, um, find out, yeah, she did, my hole, and then she, she walked away, and she left, all to me, like, eat my food.
Oh, my God.
It was a question, well, you know. But it's a little about that, just that, uh, it worked. It worked. I got you. You got that, uh, uh. And I don't know, it's something that really, uh, uh, uh. Where I'm always, you know. You got up there, I was like. Yeah. I'll give you a shirt, I don't want.
I love you, fine. Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, man, yeah. Yeah. I don't know. Think anybody's going.
Okay. Alright, sounds good, I'll see you later, Tom.
Yep. We were still here. Open room, excuse me.
Okay, I'll do it.
Okay.
This is his.
Hmm?
Chris, I was hoping. 'Cause I have.
I put it in his box again.
Yeah, I'll send him a text saying he'll need a card if he wants one, and on the other, which will be a four this year or coming.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for helping facilitating and letting that happen, because I think if you weren't there, I think it never would have happened.
So, do you want me to hang on to it until it comes up? Chris is gonna come to my office to sign it and tell me.
Yeah, I figured I would escort him up there.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
And text Mickey, just make sure he's up there and ready.
That's a good idea.
Okay, yeah.
And, um, yeah, so, root of all.
Yeah, I have a checklist. I learned last year. So, he's waiting on his EIN number. It was the last piece of the puzzle, but I wanna see, we're gonna have to sit down and go through it all tomorrow, I think he'll watch him sign it, but, uh, but if we can get it done tomorrow, if he's ready, he wants to open up as soon as he can.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to make things better. All right.
He's standing up, he's so good.
I'll get that too.
Mid-pine won't be till I get back, but.
I have to log in, so can you just?
Sure.
Okay.
Councilman Wells.
I move to come out of executive session at nine fifty-five P M.
Second.
There'd been a motion made in seconded to come out of executive session at nine fifty-five P M. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Was there anything, uh, any objections for matters discussed in executive session? Okay. All I needed to know. Councilman, Councilperson Wells, sorry.
I'd like to mo- make a motion to authorize the mayor to make a phone call to Michael Foot.
Second.
Been a motion made in seconded to authorize me to make a phone call to Michael Foot. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye also. All opposed, same sign.
Hold on one second.
Do you want my notes?
No, I just need, um, this, I just, I got the note. Who was this, second? I didn't give this back to them.
Who was the second?
I was the second. And then vote.
Somebody got an ink pen.
Okay, the mayor, you voted, or?
Yes.
And all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Somebody have an ink pen, I can borrow. All right. Okay, are we ready for the next one? Okay. Vice Mayor Sanger.
Honorable Mayor. I move that we accept the letter of resignation from our attorney, Ms. Gwendolyn Wade, for the end of day July fourth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Been a motion made in seconded to accept the resignation of our attorney, Gwendolyn Wade, effective, uh, July fourth, at the end of day, end of business day. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Regretfully, Wendy. And congratulations. We're happy you get a, go fulfill a dream or two.
Mayor, can I ask who was second? I'm so sorry.
Um.
Seela. That's who, Seela. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other thing? All right.
The minutes.
The thing, the minutes.
We have the minutes.
Oh.
I, mayor.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the executive session minute, meeting minutes of May sixteenth, regular city council meeting.
We do have a change on that.
With the amendment.
With the amendment. Everybody was there. They were all in the poll.
I'll second it.
Okay, there'd been a motion made in seconded to, uh, accept the executive session meeting minutes from May?
Sixteen.
May sixteenth, uh, as amended. Uh, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Okay. Anything else? This meeting is adjourned.